Sorry.
It's five thirty, so I'd like to call the meeting in order and take roll call. Larry, Ross, Val, and Scott. Scott's here on Zoom.
He doesn't come towards the quorum, just so you know.
I can't.
He can't vote. He can partic- participate in discussion, but he's not part of your quorum.
He can't.
He cannot vote on it.
Okay, so that restriction changed from what it was?
Yes, that is correct.
I see. Okay, so that's good to know. And we did have a notice of the meeting in the Wakefield Republican, and it's also posted on three locales in Wakefield. And the open meeting laws are behind Sean. In case you're looking, I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The consent agenda is before you. If you would like to have a motion and second to approve that agenda, and if there's something that you have questions about, we could, we could take it out and we can discuss that.
So, Ross?
Val?
Aye.
Larry? And Scott? So where are we at? We get all the way down to the?
We're down to three.
Please review?
Nope.
Are number three? Two, number three.
Yeah.
So we can open the public hearing on the comprehensive plan, and you've had a chance to look at that a little bit. We'll have a lot more opportunity to look at it. So Megan, you want to work, you've worked on this with?
Uh, yeah, it was more of a planning and zoning thing was the, was the comp plan update. Teresa can talk about, I mean, it was to be able to get everything up to date that has changed on the industrial area, all the rezoning and to plan for future use where there might be, you know, on, on different lots that, that maybe are going to go like the CBA lot. We, we don't want it zoned agriculture. We want it to be zoned C3 or C something. So is there anything else that we? That was already part of it through the housing study, so.
So Manakela prepared a comp plan update for us, and then with the planning commission, we made some little adjustments that are highlighted green on the copy there. The map, as the planning commission discussed, there's a few little changes on that that would more reflect what they think was, would more reflect what's going on out there and the zoning changes we've made. And then to the east, I think, they're probably, we're probably thinking more like a C2 or commercial type district there instead of industrial as well. So that's a few little minor changes on the map that need to be made, but by March, it's ready, it's ready for printing and publication if you're satisfied with how it looks, aside from those, with the map updates.
But we have the opportunity to go through here, and if we wanted possibly make some changes, you know, voice our opinion, right?
Yeah, but it is a change, it's an ordinance change, so, no, I think this is passed by resolution, actually. So, you know, if you're satisfied with it as, as right now, you can go ahead and pass the resolution. If you want to follow the timeline, you just have to close the hearing and then make some adjustments or continue the hearing till the next meeting, which might be part of the process.
So if people want to have the, if people have enough to look at it, but if they, if you want to keep it open for another period of time and the approval of the later meeting?
That's up to you.
It was interesting, the, uh, the, since the population were, they had three scenarios. It could increase by like forty-one people in ten years, or it could stay the same, or it could decrease. I thought that was.
And it actually increased way more than their projection.
It, yeah, it increased more than what the projection was, right? And if we build the apartment units, we would think it's going to increase more, yeah, probably. So I wonder how they came to the fact that if I do one of three things, it goes being saved, do you think? You're not going to be wrong because?
Right.
And then the workforce housing, I was looking at the funding and the, uh, the program, the one that is, I was looking at the program where people actually were remodeling their homes with, and what funds were those that they used?
Uh, workforce housing grant funds.
Yeah, they, they can use those for NHI or Wayne Community Housing. There's rehab homes, so.
I was wondering how much of that is still available? It's still, the money's still available to somebody?
World Workforce Housing money is still available. There's about eighty thousand dollars in there, so.
There's some funding there still.
Yep.
And then what about the workforce housing funding that we had for new homes, like when the governor came out and?
That's all together, yep. They can do new homes, they can do rehab, they can do, um, down payment assistance. It encompasses all of those things.
But how much of that money does that home deserve?
The eighty thousand.
So it's eight thousand for both programs?
Yeah, it's all one program.
And how much did we have when we, when we got the, the grant? How much did we have at that time?
Nine hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Okay, then my question would be, is there's, can we still apply for that grant or is that a one-year deal in total?
You can apply, um, they, if they have funding available. You know, right, they did two cycles this past year, and we, we did apply for workforce housing, but we didn't, we didn't get it.
And that's because we maybe got one before, do you think?
Well, or because we got a million dollars in other grants too that could have, I mean, I, I don't know. I'm not sure.
I guess my question is, are we going to apply for that again?
I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we need to, you know, because that fund is a revolving fund.
But in the revolving fund, we just have eighty thousand right now.
Right now, but we have like four hundred thousand dollars tied up in two houses up on the hill, so.
That, that money will be repaid.
Yeah, that money will get repaid as soon as they sell those and then.
Okay, that's kind of my question. If, if people could still take advantage of that to build a home or to?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm sure somebody else has questions. I'll relinquish the floor to somebody else. Any questions about the whole comprehensive plan?
I would like to have more time to look at it and.
So you could do a couple of things. You can close the hearing and just not act on it, or you can recess the hearing until the next meeting and reopen it again.
If you think there are going to be any changes you're going to recommend, I'd rather have recessed the hearing than closed.
Okay, uh, we got people here that can speak, though first speakers can be, uh, we don't really have a position. It's just whether the acceptance now or to make some changes. Chad, go ahead.
Uh, my question, I think I asked Megan this prior, is are we going to set, are we going to change the guidelines for that workforce housing, uh, funding to where we require them to have that? Those funds used within a certain amount of time so that it's not continually tying up those funds? I think we're talking about that now. We're kind of on an elongated term with both of those homes that we started with and whatever situations came up. Are we going to set, is that a council or is that a?
No, those funds are administered by Wayne Community Housing, and so that is something that I can bring up to them and see if they would, uh, make an amendment to those, those guidelines.
We do have terms on the lots, though, right? Once the homes are timed, who owns the homes? Up there, right?
That's, that's what I was, I was, I was trying that, and so that was why I was asking to try to find that out, just because.
So one of those, the C-Bady house, one of those is Lee Fudd's house? Are those the ones?
And then Craig Anderson's is the other.
Oh, Craig Anderson's also.
Yeah, those two are tying up the majority of those funds, right?
Yeah, Craig and Fudds.
So they're nearing completion on all of those, aren't they?
I, I think so. Uh, they, they should be, but I, again, C-Bady is separate. That was a private thing that he did, not.
Well, he didn't do any of the workforce housing. Okay, so it's Lee, Lee's and Craig's.
And you know that those got delayed part because of COVID. I mean, the supplies.
Oh.
Yeah, so, I mean, this may be kind of a unique cycle just because of the delay in supplies and that.
But those restrictions were maybe in the purchase agreement, which maybe you would have in our office.
Okay. It was really outside of the COVID for development of the community. For me, it was looking at it from the standpoint of, yeah, I understand we're in a unique situation, but moving forward with the productivity of a builder, we, we won't allow a builder just to sit on that piece of ground and tie up those funds continually. And it was just to get some sense of understanding, understanding of those guidelines or that timeframe is what, because, you know, conversations can be had with builders throughout the process to understand what's going on.
And that should probably be the sale of the, of the property. It should be, I, I think there should be a little bit of a size restriction as far as it should be at least a certain number of square feet, and then I think that there should be a time limit on when the house should be completed. And we did have that somewhat with, um, Chad, C-Bady, but he wasn't able to get the house done, and we gave him an extension, and we gave him, now it's his second extension, I think, that we've given him. But I just have, I just, I have people have a few questions about some of the things they might be able to get cement put, if I can make it a little bit better. So if we can leave it open, if, are there any other comments? If not, then I think what we've been in the motion to keep?
Just make a motion to recess the hearing until whatever the next.
Next council meeting?
But if there's any changes, we don't want to recess it, right? We want to have the opportunity to make changes.
You can make changes, yeah. That would allow anyone in the community to, to give us some of their opinion on something that might be a good idea.
So if we want to make changes, we probably should close it.
No, just recess it.
Resess it. So we just need a motion to recess. You have a second?
Uh, we should recess the public hearing until the next council meeting.
Second.
Val?
Aye.
Scott? Scott's here on Zoom. Larry?
Aye.
And Ross?
Aye.
Thank you.
And if you could give those to us before, you know.
In a week or two.
Yes, that would be helpful. Then, then everybody has a chance to look at them ahead of time too, so.
We were hoping to have a date for a, a little bit of a retreat here this month. And then we thought that would be one of the things we'd just look at and maybe go through it and talk about it.
Okay, good.
Table number five.
Okay, so we've, we've closed the public hearing, or we've recessed the public hearing. Number five is, is table?
Cause that's the actual.
I see, yeah. Okay, it's number six, open public hearing for the short-term and vacation rentals, amendment to the zoning regulations. So open public hearing this time. And is there anyone that would like to speak on that?
The legislature said that cities can't forbid, um, communities from having Airbnb or Verbo or one of those types of entities. And so, uh, but they did say that even though you have to allow them, that you can regulate them for public safety, you know, nuisance and various things like that. So this is, uh, the effort of the planning commission to allow for Airbnb for that type, but to regulate it so that, you know, it's a benefit to the community and not let be a nuisance to the neighbors.
And they've got regulations listed?
Yes, about three things.
Is this pretty typical from a third town's use, or did you guys, you know, put this together from scratch?
No, we got the information from other communities and tried to add to what we thought was worth that support.
We did that.
B and B with the.
People that pay, right?
With some of the interests that's, that's interested in this, you feel that these needs are what we need to satisfy the people that may be interested in pursuing this rental, right?
Well, I think, I think the, the, the focus is more like, uh, seeing that if you're going to open an Airbnb, you need these requirements so that your Airbnb doesn't create a nuisance for the community, isn't disruptive, it's safe for the people that come there, you know, they knew who, know who to get in contact with if there's issues, that sort of thing. So it basically is that the, the focus is on, uh, the community, uh, health and welfare and avoidance of nuisances. So come, do your Airbnb, but these are the regulations and, and, and you have to register so we, the community, you know, the city office knows who has them. Got to have a contact person name, got to have contact, you know, telephone number and so on that can be, that you can get ahold of them anytime of the day or not, if there are issues.
And they're, they're really becoming popular. And we stayed with two weeks ago, and, uh, but Maria, the guy, the guy that owned it, she had his one that we're talking about, called two or three days ago, and he called back and they, and it was, I, I think it's in the chapter regulations, and I think I can see what there's a need to have, be able to contact somebody.
What, what has happened is people have, investors basically, wherever they've bought up abandoned homes, but they don't reside there, and then they rent them out.
Yes.
And they cause issues. Maybe their party or there's a lot of cars, and nobody knows who to contact because it's an absentee owner. So these regs are designed to, you know, get that into place and make sure this thing happens.
Well, the one that we were in had a blue fleet binder with laminated sleeves, I mean, the, the plastic sleeves, and they had all the rules for the whole, for the whole community. And they had everything they can think of in there as far as what you should be doing, and then it had the contacts.
We had that in South Dakota also, up at the hills, same thing.
So it's good to do. So we're off squareway on that one. We'll need to.
Close the public hearing.
If there's anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
Uh, Larry?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
And Scott?
Then you need to, if you want, now there's that ordinance one dash two thousand twenty-two, which someone needs to introduce.
Okay, and that's the thing, that's just a preview of what we just talked about. We've had a public hearing, and so we could have action on ordinance one twenty-two for short, short-term and vacation rentals amendment to the zoning regulations.
Somebody needs to introduce the ordinance and move to waive the three readings. If, if you want to waive the three, otherwise or to do the first.
Is there a need to waive? Is there somebody waiting to, do we have one in Wakefield available to read now, or? Or should we wait to waive the three?
I would want to have at least one reading on it to get the community a chance to respond, because there's no hurry, is there?
So somebody just needs to introduce the ordinance, and then we have to do the reading.
Introduce the ordinance, and I'll read it.
I would introduce ordinance one dash two thousand twenty-two.
An ordinance of the city of Wakefield to amend the zoning regulations provides for the regulations of short-term and vacation rentals, repealing all ordinances and conflict therewith and providing an effective date. So we can wait until the next, then have our second, maybe waive the third reading. Is that what you want to do, Larry?
Uh huh.
And we didn't have a place to commute today because we, Chad wanted to meet her when we met, and then placed a commute, so actually we didn't have a meeting before the council meeting. Utility form on the report, is Mike here?
No, he is at, uh, training in Lincoln. But he has a written.
Just agreed to report.
Okay.
Wind turbines are here.
Are they installed yet?
No.
Tomorrow? I suppose this guy's a lot bigger than that.
A lot of ice out there.
There is a lot of ice out there? We were hoping to get it before the ice parted. So you won't put them until spring then?
Yeah, I could get a thaw out there. I'm, I'm not for sure if that hasn't thawed up some of that now, but.
It's got thaw not to get a vote in there.
Yeah.
How many turbines we got? Two?
I thought it was four, I think we got four, yeah.
Four?
The, uh, we got to check for the, is it Elon, the, the traffic signal that's?
Oh.
Speed sign?
Yeah, a bill.
We got, we, we signed a check for it, right?
Yeah, yep.
So, but that's still not working, right?
It's, uh, in a different language.
It's in kilometers, it's in miles.
It is fixing working, but it needs to be switched to kilometers, and Mike has to coordinate with someone in France over the computer to do that, and then he can just get connected.
Green or something, he said, so.
You, you know, the one, the one in the south of the town has worked and functioned forever. The one north of town was put in later.
Yeah.
And it worked for a, a short period of time, then it, you know, it was, so I would be working other times it wasn't working. But I was surprised that we needed a whole new bottom case because it was.
He, he had to send the whole thing in to have it redone and caliphoned. The other thing is, is, I mean, I think, uh, we're going to work with the department, both of them, once we get that annexation, we, uh, we'll be able to move that further north. Because with that, that triangle around Dan Brown property, we have, have to avoid that because that wasn't part of the city limits.
I see.
So if that comes in, we're good to clear the levy on that side, hopefully they'll let us move that because realistically, when you've got a semi coming in at fifty or sixty mile an hour, and he finally sees that, put it down there by the Michael's booth, drive by his, well, that's, that's a short period of time, so we need a.
I, I agree with you.
We need to move that back there to the north, and don't get, uh, escape a little bit.
I agree with what you're saying. I wonder if you look for a different company because the equipment has only been operating for a period of, probably a period of days, maybe sixty days, but now we need, how much was the check? Do you remember?
Like nineteen hundred dollars, I think. So we're going to hold the check until it's fixed?
Well, I signed the check. Did you send it already?
Nope. I have not.
That's what I would, I would think we should at least hold the check until we get the new piece of equipment, but I wonder what the council thought of that.
Yeah.
I think we just need to call them, and I can call them and tell them what the deal is. But I think nineteen hundred, it seemed like that was almost as much as we paid for the initial. Was it twenty-six hundred for the whole thing? Twenty-four, twenty-six?
I remember those numbers.
And we might want to look at, send it back and look at a different company, because it was in kilometers. Somebody that has an office in the US.
It's the matter of having somebody program that and send it to Mike, so he can go, he's got a laptop, download that information, and they change it, so.
But did they say why, why it didn't work? What, I mean?
Originally, we believed it got hit by lightning.
Well, so you think they're losing from the heat of the earth?
And that, yeah, we tried everything to get that thing working, and then finally it just said, Mike sent it back and let him either rebuild it or replace it, so.
So we just want to hold the check until the thing is operating?
Yeah, I think Mike will be back, and, you know, let him see what he can do to get it up and running, so.
And we were hoping to get those, uh, wind turbines. I mean, we were supposed to get them earlier, and we called them, and they've got, we finally got them, which is great, but we knew it was probably going to be a weather issue. And last year, we were, uh, just barely under the, uh, level where we could discharge, so we don't have the wind turbines, we'd very easily be in a position where we can't discharge next spring. I mean, hopefully we can get them in early enough. They tested through April first, right?
Yeah, there's a, there's a short wind turbine here where they can discharge, but, yeah, so they'll have to get, get them working as soon as they can.
Okay. Anything else on Mike's report that you saw? And what training is Mike? Is it water? Val?
I think we're wondering, um, how often do we look at our wells and, and the pumps, the pipes, that kind of stuff to inspect them? Like every two or three years? I mean, if it, if the shaft of the casing were that corroded that they broke, I mean, that's not. I, I'm concerned.
The bad news with that, though, is in, in order to inspect that, you take the well down, take it apart, this is so on.
Which is expensive, right?
You know, you got to take the whole thing about, and then the state gets involved and says, hey, you got to, uh, disinfect this thing and get it clean, and then you got to test it and prove, and so get, it's a pipe consuming that. I understand what you're saying, but, um, I'm trying to think when we had that well built, but in there, so.
Was that, is that a realist well?
Yes.
Is that the one Sergeant Irrigation did?
My thought was fifteen years ago.
I think it's fifteen.
Yeah, it, it probably was right at that.
Two thousand five is what it reports.
Two thousand five. Fifteen, sixteen, and?
Yeah, Adam, I guess you got any input for that?
Depends on what you put. I'll show you the things I can actually answer, because for some parts of that. To answer your question, Val, yes, there are things you can do, but it's not worth it.
It's not what?
It's not worth it. It's not worth the extra steps that the city has to go through for the public water supply. Have everything tested and the extra cost to have us just pull it out for the pump.
And you can't see that there's a problem until it's a problem, right?
The inside, the, the worst part of this was on the inside, and because it's a water moving rate pump, the shafts are subjected to the water all the time. They just eat themselves up. The water here is naturally corrosive to it. There's not a lot you can do.
There is some, some companies that are PV, but I don't think it's good enough to the point where you can say, yeah, that is a problem.
It's just like an irrigation well, for the most part. Run it till it breaks, and then we just come fix it. Basically, where it's, I mean, so whatever's going to fall apart like it did on the well too.
So, Adam, I'm going to ask you a question. Sergeant got the bid, and Solman's was, is right by the well field.
There is.
And now Christian's, but it was kind of controversial that a company from that far away came in and did our well.
I believe there was something wrong, stated wrong in the bid at that time.
Is that right?
Where they were not able to reject certain bids. There, there was some miswording, if I remember correctly. So that's why Solomon Weld did not get the job at the time. So Sergeant Irrigation got it, and for whatever reasons, in the past year or two years, the city of Wakefield had not been very happy with Sergeant Irrigation.
Well, I was in Imperial Nebraska yesterday, and I drove by a Sergeant Irrigation, you know, it's way, and it's a lot later. And where's the closest site that they have an office? Is that it?
No, it's somewhere up west.
There, there's a couple of locations.
But they're quite a ways west.
I want to say there's somebody down up here who can do, I can't, I'm going to tell you. Geneva?
Geneva?
Yeah.
But it wasn't, there's nothing wrong with what they did as far as the well is?
No.
Okay.
How, how big, uh, speed issue is this? Can, can we take the time to get another bid from Sergeant? Because at twenty-five thousand hundred bucks, don't we owe it to the community to look and see if they're? I mean, it would be great keeping town, but again, you got to keep people honest.
We, we try to get a bid, you know, two or three bids unless it's an emergency, so this.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, is it?
I, I don't know what, that's our main well, right? That's our, that's our best well.
Well, at this time, yes. They were the one with the highest capacity.
Have they started on it?
The pump is out.
They did, they pulled the pump, which is one of the most expensive things, right?
They're pulling. Yeah, we don't rush. No matter where you go, we're not, it's not cheap to do one.
So does anybody else have a concern about that, or do we just?
Yeah, one way is our timetable normally have a week to get it going, or what are we looking at?
I feel like it's something that should be fixed in a immediate situation. It should be fixed in a very timely manner. You don't want to put yourself in a position where if we have a big storm or something like that, we're now out of water because our main is down, but, uh, that's my short-term experience. Maybe Jim has a little more input on that.
And we've got two other wells. If it's, a good time to do it is probably now, uh, because the water consumption is less. You know, we're not watering lots and stuff. I, I think you need to move on it quickly, but I would maybe get another bid and see what happens, but.
Do we have any warranty information on this? You, I mean, is there a warranty on, because we're going to stay here still?
That, the pump that was in there was original, and when the well was, well was constructed, it's out of that.
No, I know that, but moving forward with your guys' system, because obviously before it was a steel shaft. Now.
Uh, now this one has a quote for, should have stainless steel shaft, shaft.
Yeah, and that's what your quote represents, right?
What's that?
Your quote represents a stainless shaft, right?
Yeah, that's what I represent, the pump back in.
That's not what we have in the house.
What you had before was just called rolled steel.
Yeah, but do we have a warranty on, will there be a warranty period for the?
There is a warranty, I just don't know how long it is. And, and you have, when you guys can start this project. If you approve it, and they get pulled tomorrow, next week. We'll all have a pump to put back and do it next week.
Well, what do you think, Jim, on the bid, or Nikki, or Chad, or Nicky?
Whatever, yeah, I agree with Chad, and you know, I guess it's, it's a urgent thing to do, you don't wanna delay it for weeks and weeks. Because you don't know the situation. If you had a fire, I don't know where we would be with that, so those are the things that concern me.
In retrospect, too, to that is, if you have a, if you have a well at your farm, or you have a well, like I had, I had to replace my well, uh, my pump, and it was a seven and a half horse, which was considerably gross, it was around two hundred gallons per minute. And uh, where I live, I pay over thirteen thousand, and that was for a residential well situation. This is a lot different situation, it's a lot heavier, you know. Need or necessary, you know, bonding to have, so with the bid that I look at, I know it's a large number, but to what you pay on the residential side of things, it's, it's really not that bad compared to what we're using.
I was kind of surprised when I saw it, I thought it was more than that. What do you think, Nikki?
Well, I did ask Mike, I think last week, about getting a second bid from Sergeant, and he did have some concerns. Um, I don't remember the situation, but Sergeant came on with a well too, and told us we needed to replace it, and that wasn't the case, he answered. Do you remember that, Jim?
I do remember that, I don't know what, what Adam had the.
A few years ago, we just rebuilt well two.
Okay.
And I believe it was this summer, Sergeant came out and did a, one of their efficiency tests, which obviously not long. They recommended to have it re, to have it pulled and redone, and it was just redone a few years ago.
So he just now a little bit concerned about.
Sargent's used a good efficiency test.
Yeah, I don't know whether, who the technician was. I honestly, I honestly, you know, I've worked with a sergeant on four or five different projects on wells. Uh, if you believe there's a need for emergency, then you, you just need to get this thing done and back in operation.
So what do you think, Russ?
Um, I mean, I'd rather keep the business low, while I might see that as soon as possible, but they're not starting until next week. Maybe you talk to Sergeant and say, hey, can you get us a bid and start by next week, if your bid looks better than, you know, we could entertain that, but I'm not gonna wait around for a bid or anything like that.
You, you just think you get us something out of the waiting period?
Well, I'm talking like by the end of the week.
Yeah, if we.
I wouldn't delay the project for, I don't think, for, you know.
Have you already, like, Adam, part of the, the twenty-five thousand, have you guys already, is some of that already, what you've already done as far as?
I'm assuming it's already half the labor.
This is after what you've done so far?
That, that should be including what we've already done, we've already done half the labor.
So twenty-five thousand includes what you've already done? And that's what kind of throws a damper on.
You're a little pot committed there with that.
So your next bid, I know, the bid you would get from Sargent's would come in cheaper because they won't be missing half the work rate.
Yes.
Right, it says labor is.
Yeah, that, that's probably not a fair comparison, so.
Well, we can, we can do one of two things. We can say it's an emergency situation, and we can accept the bid from Christiansen's. Or, if we can do as Russ is, and what Val asked was, try to get a second bid soon, but now that's a question of the council, what do you guys think then? Larry, what do you think?
I would just question how we're gonna clear it out.
Yeah, now.
Now, since some of the progress has already been started, the money flowing, and then.
I think we have to look at, too, the response time of what Christiansen offered us.
Yeah.
And gave us as a community compared to what we've been, what you guys have experienced in the past with Sergeant. Uh, I'm not up to knowledge on that, but I felt like the response time from them was uh pretty immediate, and given the price where it sits, I feel, you know. Truthfully, that it's a bid that's represented pretty well in terms, if Sergeant is bidding apples to apples from pulling it to installing it. You probably are talking maybe hundreds of dollars or maybe a thousand or so difference, and at that point in time, as a community, I feel that we pay for response over. You know, response timeliness over the bid process in an emergency situation, when we have time, it goes out the bid like everything else.
Then I think we should just move ahead and accept the bid and, and have Christiansen's.
I'm gonna ask Scott, because I believe, I forgot about him. Scott, what do you think? Sorry, I haven't.
Uh, it's, I, I would kind of agree, I think we need, something that just needs to be done. Um, we're in a position where it sounds like uh Christiansen are to start the process, like they'll do better off, just sticking with it and just getting it done, because it needs to be done.
Alright, thanks. Are we ready to make a motion?
So that looks like that's number fifteen, right?
Yes.
Let me ask you, is this a hard figure, this, wherever the twenty-five, is that what it's gonna cost?
It says estimate only prices subject to change.
Yeah, it's, it's got, you, you know, anytime we fix or repair anything, it's gonna have to be an estimate, that's the ability.
So you don't have a claim for that?
But this is a hard replacement, too, replacing a pump, replacing the shaft, so it's not like we're diagnosing anything, or, it's diagnosing is done.
It's done.
It's replace this, replace this to make it operational.
I don't, I'm not sure exactly what the quote says. I'm assuming it's for a brand new fool's head, uh, shaft and pipe hole.
For the wall plant column discharge hand assembly.
Yep, okay, I, I know what I'm.
They were called free.
It's for an entire brand new pump, the entire.
And I just raised that question because it's really not on your agenda.
It's number fifteen, approval of repair to well four.
Oh, okay, I thought we were on ten.
We were. We were, sorry.
I'm not very aware of that.
Yep.
So we could.
I take action. I approve the Christiansen to move forward with the project on repairing, replacing pump number four.
How did I get up fifteen?
You just started asking questions.
Okay, you, you've got a vague motion, and we got a second?
She was.
Uh, I don't know whose turn it is to go, is it yours, Val?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Now we gotta go back to uh approval of a new member to the Wakefield Volunteer Fire Department. And you saw the Wakefield paper where Brock is a lieutenant now, that's kind of neat, and he thanked the fire department and rescued Wakefield, that's. Congratulations, Larry, have a neat picture like that. Alright, Adam, you got somebody?
Yeah, we have a new member that we approved last month, her name is Kiana Craig. Uh, she currently lives in Wake, she just became a dispatcher for fixing counties, so she is looking at moving out of Wake.
That's good. We need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to the new member.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm slow to that, alright, thanks, Val. Okay, she approved that. Thank you for, we always, always excited to see we get a new member. Uh, the next thing is a request for utility building adjustment, and Carolyn Rocky, you saw the letter. Uh, they, we had a similar issue uh with, um, I don't, I don't know how long that, that was, but Rita was here, was it Rita was here? And the, the same thing, and they're paying, they're gonna pay for the water, the water was, was broken, the water, the house, their apartments. And they would just like to not have to pay the storage, the sewer cost, because the water ran outside of the grass. And that's what we did with Rick and Rita, Fendrick's rental property, so to be consistent, but to do that, we have to, is there anything else we have to do besides just approving this? But we could have discussion, does anybody feel different than I do that we did it for Rita and, and, uh, you didn't do it for Carolyn?
Looks like if we waive it, the sewer charge would be, what is that, eight hundred?
Eight hundred dollars.
Eight oh nine.
Eight oh nine, yep.
And they're buying the water for one thousand sixty-two dollars.
Yeah, they got a big water building, and they were just trying to get some, it, relief from the sewer, which they didn't really use the water to go in the sewer. If there's no, none of discussion, we just ask for a motion to approve that.
Make a motion that we waive the sewer charge of eight hundred nine dollars for Wakefield Bailey Departments.
Second.
Larry?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
The number fifteen is the second reading of ordinance eleven twenty twenty-one, two X miscellaneous parcels of the north addition. And this is actually, it's some of the ground that the South Paul Louli Field is built on, isn't it, some of this? And then it's, it's Dan Kelly's, and then the rest of it is, well, there it is, we've seen it all before. So I guess the only thing we have to do is decide if we want to go with the third reading, or we could vote to waive the third reading, but this is the second reading.
I thought we had to do all three readings because it was an annexation.
Oh, yes, you do for the annexation.
Yeah, Val.
Ooh, I wasn't paying attention.
Can I change seats? An ordinance of the city of Wakefield, Nebraska, annex into the city limits, certain miscellaneous tracks of land located in Dixon County, Nebraska, which are contiguous with the city limits. Consistent of thirty-one point eight-three acres, more or less, and then it lists the legal descriptions. Okay, that's, that's all we have.
So next month will be the final reading and the passage.
Purchase and invoicing software addition for power manager, and, is this yours? Nope?
Kind of Chad's, Nikki's, and mine, I guess. Um, Nikki knows a little bit more about it, and Chad's got an idea of how we'd like to use it. But Power Manager is the software that we use for our accounts, payables, our utility billing, and all of that. But we have not been using it for invoicing, um, businesses or other entities when the city does a project. Um, right now, there's really no system of keeping track of how we would invoice somebody, other than us just coming up with a bill on our own in Publisher or what have you. By getting the software, then we can do it in Power Manager, just like we do everything else, and there's a way to track. And then we'll know, um, how much it's costing us for, to do certain projects. I guess that's how I took it, if you guys want to say anything else.
Now, there's just an add-on, some other things that our software can do for us to.
How, how much, the total amount is, when you get all this stuff and get it hooked up and spuck together?
So the total amount is twenty-four sixty, so two thousand four hundred and sixty. Um, that includes the first time of setting it up of sixteen hundred dollars. And then every year, we would be paying the additional fee of eight hundred and sixty dollars to have the software. So just like last month where we approved the software for everything else that I think came around, I can't remember to be honest with you, but I'm thinking right around four thousand dollars. That would be added on to this in twenty twenty-three.
But this is the amount.
This would be the amount we would have to pay right now to be up and running this year.
Then it'd be eight, eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Afterwards, yes.
Discussion, council?
Uh, I guess I'll touch on why we kind of brought it up. It was, you know, looking through the budgetary, uh, itemized list and the different venues that we have with CRA, sales tax, city, you know, sewer, uh, water. And street and things like that. Um, obviously, if we're gonna attempt to do more things in-house, it's a way for not only the city to track that in the offices, but it's a way for us to build within. Side of the city government to track and allow for those, you know, items to happen. Um, and for, for me, I think we can use it beyond that, even outside of it, and maybe I'm wrong, but like, are we looking to instead of sending paper copies out, we can email? Um, so that, it, it's just simplifying some of the things that we're doing currently, which is maybe a little bit old school, and fast-tracking some of those funds, uh, into those accounts, um. Via a computer rather than, you know, paper and postage and everything else. So I don't know how many, in the community that we can reach out to, to, to have that, but it's a process that will, I think, in the end, uh, turn over pretty quickly, so.
And that's how a lot of our vendors are sending, um, their bills now is via email. I mean, yes, we still get a handful that are, um, on paper, but most of them just send it by email now. So we could do that amongst.
Any discussion? If not, we can make a motion.
Second. Make a motion to purchase this new software, power manager.
Second.
Two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Larry?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
Thanks. So Val, we've got fifteen, uh, sixty. And this is something, I think, the sixty that we do every year, to be part of the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development. They've helped us a lot, and we've got a lot of nice. They're working with Crap Application, and hopefully we'll get some more, so.
Here's the resolution, if you want to read it, Paul.
I do, I have to, I think. This is Resolution one twenty-two. Uh, is there any discussion before I read this? We just, a resolution of the city of Wakefield, Nebraska, providing for full participation by the city of Wakefield, Nebraska. In the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District, through the execution of an air governmental agreement, and the district by resolve as follows, with the city council, city of Wakefield. And I guess all, those are the things that we want to be, we're authorized to join and cooperate with the other counties. It's been real beneficial for us. So now we need to, we've introduced it, now will you vote on it?
Some need to introduce and move for passage.
Okay.
I would introduce, uh, Resolution one, I should want to move to the passage.
Okay, Russ?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And that's all we can do yet?
We'll sign it after a bit.
I will.
Okay, uh-huh, nope, okay.
The next one is the approval of appointment of boards and committees, and we made a lot of good progress, but not all the boards are ready for final approval. We need for a couple of people to say yes, we've got, the hiccup now, we've got, I already had one person kind of pencil in for both the plant and zoning and the CRA shot that Teresa reminded me, you can't do that, so. We've got to find one, one more person in either, uh, that person freely, the CRA, or the, the board, the, uh, plant zone. Approval of appointed city officials, what are you talking about there, that the, like Olson's?
You have to approve like city engineer, city clerk, city attorney.
Right, and we can do that, I think, at this time, but the thing with the, uh, city engineer, and we've, we've had some conversations, but if. Right before I became a member of the city council, we used JEO engineering, and there's a number of communities that use JEO, as well as other engineering firms. JEO has put a, actually, an engineer, I believe it's an engineer, in the city office in Wayne, because Wayne is one of their larger communities. And it would be ten miles away from us, whereas South City's a little bit more difficult. And South City has, uh, Rod, who's been there for what, Jim, twenty years in South Singler, did that long?
Rod Hanson?
Yeah.
Uh, he's no longer there for.
I know he's no longer there, but he was the experience.
He was probably there that long, yeah.
And then now our, the guy, Matt will be the guy to talk to, and you guys know Matt, but he doesn't have as much experience as what Rod had. And what, what I think we have to think about is whoever, irregardless of who we appoint, there are other engineers that are, that we can use, even if we appoint Olson's. We could use JEO for a project, is that right? And it might be something that, that we want to look at, just in hopes of comparing prices. Because we have, for the last two years, I think we've, has it been the last two years, Jim, we've exclusively used Olson's in every project. And we think maybe we could at least get a little bit more of a competitive price if we actually look and use some other guys.
So what does it mean to be the city engineer?
You're the engineer on record, uh, but you don't. And I think, I think if we have a job, then we probably, I mean, we, we could get a cost from Olson's, even if we want, if we're thinking that it's a job that maybe another firm could do. But then get the other firm's bid and just see what the difference is. And I, I think, I think because we've done that for a couple of years, that we think we have to use them, but those other engineers of all, I mean, like Ace is a West Boy. Uh, he's a city engineer for a number of communities, and I talked to Wes, they do some projects in Wayne. And I talked to Wes, they do some projects in Wayne. And they're close, I, I wouldn't mind seeing him do a project in Wakefield. But Wes said if they do a project with them, they try to keep it, uh, you know, a little bit more of a simple, a little simpler project. Like the, the street we're putting in probably wouldn't be a project with them because we're putting in storm sewer. And what else, we put water and what else out there, is that? And we still haven't gotten the, their, they are not, they're not done with that project, are they, Olsons?
They were here today.
Jim, did you talk to them or Chad?
I was in class.
Oh, you were in class?
Yeah, Val and I were in a meeting, so.
And what percentage of that are they done with?
Um, the next, uh, they hope with, before the first of February, it'll be back to us with sixty percent, right, Jim?
Right.
Um, because we really needed, we need some cost estimates, um, for some of the businesses wanting...
Was I supposed to be at this meeting?
I have no...
And it'd also be nice to know the cost, moving forward, the type of projects out there. But today, they got the information they needed to make some decisions as to how, what we were suggesting. And, and, and I suggested that we not just stop it at the end of Ninth Street. I said, let's do the intersection, I think, I think this is the time to do it. I don't think we want to be doing some, some things halfway and then have to come back later and redo them to move on to the next phase. I think we need to start planning for the future, so. That, those are the suggestions I made and that's, they're gonna come back, but Jim didn't think it was too dumb. So that made it feel better. Um, and, you know, just, just basic decisions about how we wanted the water to run. And also that if the threeplex, the whole threeplex goes in for the apartments, that's gonna allow a lot. So the drainage, I think, is one of the biggest issues. And that, so they're aware of that and we'll plan accordingly.
I didn't know there was a meeting, because then I did an email order and I...
Yeah, you did, you were on it.
Yeah, I was on top all day, I should, should have been there. Yeah, I had, I had, maybe you know that, I think it goes to Janelle, maybe she didn't see it. When did you get your email?
On email.
But when?
Um, was it this morning? Yeah, it was this morning.
So it was just this morning? If you ever had one of those again, if you give them a call, that'd be there, that'd be interesting, that too, that's... All right. And... So the email came from Olsons?
I'm, I'm forwarded, you sent it to me on Monday and I forwarded it out.
Okay, um, but I guess if... You know, last year, we visited with, uh, Rod about the fact that they engineered the building here and didn't do too much, and Rod said that, well, that's not really one of their fields of expertise. They do it, but they don't feel like that's one of their strong suits. And he gave us a little bit of engineering for, to make up for the fact that they, there were some things that were missed with the building of the building. So then we appointed Olson, but I think, the thing I would like to see is whoever we appoint, that we can let help there for engineering, that there's good engineers out there.
I, I think for individual projects, we should, we've, I think we've kind of stuck with Olson's here lately. We've spent a lot of streets and projects that they kind of have their hands on. But yeah, I think moving forward, I think it would be...
Yes, I'd have to agree, it's good to keep the eyes open and get another opinion sometimes.
And generally, in the past, when I was the council, if he came for a meeting, we tried to schedule it. So he could also come to council meeting, but we only had an Olson representative at the council meeting except for Craig on the Zoom, right?
Been a while.
Been a while. So, anyway. Um, as far as the other people, that's, it's who we've got. Um, I don't think there's any question about anything else. So I don't know, do we have to make a motion to approve those then?
Yes, so you made the appointment then, other than the engineer.
All right. Okay, and the question here was city attorney. That's all, we just have to put, leave my name to the city attorney, okay. All right. Yeah, is there anything else of any, I mean, we know Pam's clerk, we know everything else, right?
Yeah, I don't know of any other ones.
And right now Nikki's the, in the position of, in our city administrator. So that's, that's who we've got. And if we make Olson the engineer, our city engineer, that just means that they're, for a lot of the, I mean, they're, they're gonna stand up for us if we have a question about engineering, I guess. So we need a motion to approve those appointments.
Salma?
Larry?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
The next is the update on civic center board, and Val and Larry, is it Larry's on the board?
Ross and I busy with them.
Okay.
Ross, you're on the young.
Uh, yeah, we sat down with the civic center board, what's left of it, was there Ford, at least, and then Tammy was there too. Um, and just had a conversation about maybe, what, you know, we as a council or the city office could do just to make things a little more cohesive and, and also, like we said, just kind of get the wheels pointed in the right direction on this thing. I think a lot of it just comes down to the occasion between whether it's Tammy and the city administrator or Nikki or whoever. And knowing, I, I think they felt like we were a little suppressive with our, um, you know, spending cap for them too. So we talked more about raising that to four or five hundred dollars.
How much, I'm sorry, four or what?
I think four hundred probably is whatever we're, you know, going with. But, um, just so we have a hiccup, so they feel like they can do things efficiently down there. But we also talked about staying within the budget and any, you know, changes to the physical building. If they would want to talk to the administrator or whoever, do something like that before they do anything or call somebody in to do something. So just kind of letting out some of that stuff.
How, how about the keys, Jim, are, are we rekeying the whole building or is it...
No, I think Mike and Nikki have been working on that.
The only one that's getting rekeyed is the senior center door, interior doors. So the mall do not.
I think that was the only challenge we had was really going...
Was that lock not working?
When you put the key in there, it just spins the whole lock, you can't get it to unlock or lock.
I see.
So I think the lock might have took some keys down to them this week, so I'll have to look for next week to really put a new lock in there and key it.
And the thing that, I guess, concerns me is the fact that there was a board chairman and a person that's employed to the city that basically was acting like that they were above Jim in that case, or the city office. And I don't know how they got that opinion. I don't know if they just were thinking that, you know, that they could make it bigger than it really is. But we had two ladies at the senior center that were very upset because they were told, don't ever go above us again. Well, I said that we want, we want, we can get input from those two ladies, they do a great job at the senior center. Um, we can get input from somebody that uses the facility, like Kelly Brown, who was told at the last event that she couldn't get in to decorate for her shower because they had an event and they had some problem with it, so they put the band in here. Well, that was the night before, and I don't think the band would, I don't know how the band could possibly mess up this room where it would be that hard to, first of all, I think they would clean up behind themselves, after themselves. And secondly, um, I think the lady that rented it and every right to be able to get in there by eight or nine o'clock in the morning as opposed to coming in at eleven or eleven-thirty. And the way they reacted to that, that those people had come to some, and Kelly didn't come to me, I simply heard about it and went to Jim and Jim took care of it. It was almost like, don't ever do that again. Well, they're not in a position to tell us that that can't happen again. I mean, we're here to serve the public, we're not here to, to give somebody a, a little canyon that they can, that, that is theirs. This is the city building, it's not my building, it's not the employee's building.
And it sounds like Pam and Chad and Nikki are gonna be at the next meeting as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that would be too, just to get everybody on the same page and so there's no misunderstanding, I don't think.
And do you think there need to be that many people on the board, ninety?
Probably not.
So we can talk about that, retreat and get our board and maybe make some additions?
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate the update. Uh, we have a five thousand dollar loan app, application for Crazy Jacks. And I heard that place was really crowded the day of the week to get in. I saw people going in, they're just going in, going in. So I don't know, you've probably seen this, uh, what do you think, council?
I, I have a question, not necessarily about this loan, but the other loans that have been, um, issued to businesses that maybe don't last, the loans are paid off, then it goes back to sales tax, is that where that comes from, that loan?
It should go back to sales tax, doesn't it, Jim?
Yes.
So you've got those loans back?
We only have one outstanding, the only one loan, um, of all of them, so I think we're sitting on, well, this person's big to Arizona and there's just, I think, they still owe a thousand bucks, but...
So that's pretty good. In the process of voting, making a lot of loans, that's pretty good.
Yeah, because I always hear about it going out, but then that's all I'd ever heard, so I was hoping it was, it did.
Most of them are repaying, I think.
Yeah, they make regular payments. Yeah, the person that was in there prior had a loan with us, so she's still making payments.
She's still making, yeah.
As long as she doesn't default on it, we'll let her continue to make payments even though the business is not there anymore.
Uh, I'm overly apprived, a loan application for Crazy Jacks.
Okay. Ross, your turn, okay?
Second.
Yes. Aye.
Aye.
And Larry?
Aye.
Okay, number twenty-one, entertain a request from Wakefield Progressive to use the city park for a Wakefield party on June fourth, twenty twenty-two. And I don't know who's gonna speak, Megan?
Yeah, there's a map, Paul. Yeah, you guys should have all gotten a map of, of what we're looking at. Um, we decided to try it again for a second year. We, everything did not go right the first year, but we're, we're hopeful that we can correct some of those issues. So, um, we would like to have it so that the stage is towards the Pee Wee Fields and, um, facing to the south. And then with some parking there and then, um, some overflow parking either at the school or another location with some, some shuttles. Um, there's, there's a, you know, a lot of things that still we haven't, we haven't, um, solidified yet, you know, as far as like fencing, the SDL, that kind of stuff, because we don't want to do any of that until we know for sure we're able to, to have it down there. I know that, that is the weekend before a baseball tournament that is usually held there. And then, um, the same with a softball tournament, that's usually Avatar, that, that affected us last year, so. Questions?
Yeah, so what, what are you talking about, a big dance again, or what's...
Yep, the concert and just like we, we did last year.
So you're talking alcohol in the park?
Yes.
At, at this point, the, there are city ordinance, there's no alcohol in the park? How is this, how's this shakeout?
It's posted, no alcohol, no, no, I don't think everybody follows that rule. I don't know how that was...
Can I have that map back and kind of show people? It didn't get put on the...
But in order for alcohol here, we have to pass it in this... ...the civic center, but I don't know that that number is... So.
Restrooms?
We have to make a decision about that.
Restrooms, we'd like to be able to use the, the restrooms that are there, you know, in the concession stand. But I think that we will probably have to bring in some, some porta-pots also, um, you know, just because we're not gonna, depending on how we, we fence it in, it may not be feasible to, to go around the concession stand like that to allow access, so.
So not on the field, but on the, like...
On the ground, yep, if we look at your map, sorry, it's not on there. Okay.
The one thing I didn't get on there, sorry, maybe.
Okay, no problem.
We're passing it around.
What, how big is the stage that you use?
Uh, I put that in there. Sixteen by thirty-six.
Like a semi.
Yeah, this is a different stage than what we used last time, but yeah, sixteen by thirty-six. So I'm assuming it's gonna have the fold-down wings and stuff like that, so.
So what's your, why are you choosing the park this time and not out there in this field?
Because we're gonna have construction going on down here. And I, I don't know that that's something we want to have to try to work around. I mean, that street might be under construction, um, Perry's supposed to be working, Sebay's gonna be working down there. I just feel like that's adding a lot of temptation to people.
Are you thinking just beer or are you thinking, well?
I mean, we would probably, because we would be selling it or vauntiers would be doing it. I think it's gonna have to be something that can be in a can, you know, whether that's a Truly or a beer, a hard seltzer. But I would, I would do mixed drinks.
Who's gonna be held responsible for like the cleanup?
Well, my husband picked up every cigarette butt out in this parking lot the morning after the last event, so.
So volunteer base.
Yes. I don't think anybody could complain about how the facility looked the day after the event, so.
So are you looking at maybe getting a group to help you so that there are actual people that will be there to help?
Yep.
Okay.
That's part of that learning experience.
Yeah.
So. And we'll hopefully have more people around, again, last year, we had a baseball tournament going on. So there is a lot of volunteers wrapped up with that. And then there is district softball, so a lot of our families were out of town. So it was, yeah, that's why we moved it up a weekend.
I mean, I guess as long as the proper channels are followed and, you know, so we take care, we want to take care of the park and everything. Um, at least initially, I think, I would be fine.
I have, I have some back, but I'm, I'm just thinking of my wild days. Have you got somebody, are, are you aware that probably increased security is gonna be necessary?
We had gate security last year and we will have gate security again this year. Last year, they were standing around for to death, Garrett was there.
Garrett was there going, kill me now.
Yeah, but no, we will, we will have to have, have gate security.
The pool makes me nervous.
Thank God we got video cameras. But I mean, they shouldn't, everything, I mean, I can't, I can't say that nothing will happen, um, you know. Same like we can't say somebody at the campers can't get wasted and go hide the fence, so. Um, but yeah, I mean, it's not, our goal is not to have anything destroyed or damaged, so.
What band are you looking at?
Uh, we have Baker Grissom from Nashville, and he's gonna play an acoustic set. And then Angie Kay's coming back with her full band, um, as a headliner. And then we are also working with a Nebraska band, um, called Shooter Jacks that we're, we're trying to get as a, as a third, so.
And that was in the paper, wasn't it, like two weeks ago?
Well, the two, yeah.
So I don't know if that's in the paper or something.
You know, we'd like to have, I mean, speaking for just myself, anything that we could have in the park would be good because we have to justify spending money at the park from, you know, all year long. And with football going away, it's nice to have other activities. The only question that I have is that I'm not, I'm not taking a stance one way or the other, but when the Suicide Explorers came the first time, whoever organized it was trying to have a beer garden with that. And it kind of spread like wildfire throughout the community, the ministerium united against it. And so they didn't, they didn't do that, I don't know if anyone else remembers that, but...
I'm pretty sure Charity will come down and have a beer with me, so.
Is it a...
I sent the map to you, it's on the email.
I, I mean, I would hope that, I mean, we could, we could try to do it outside of town at a farmstead or something. Um, it just will make it by non-costs reasonable for us to do anything like that. So the goal is just to bring people to town.
I, I'm not sure what the, what the ordinances are, but I know that the site has been there forever. They invoked the ordinance and they had a pretty strong, but it has been a long time ago. had a pretty strong, it might have been a long time ago, but I know we didn't, I mean, then, I wasn't involved in bringing the explorers, but, they were hoping to make enough money, it was a fundraising type thing, so they were, thought if they had the beer, that that would bring more people.
We need to declare this with local property owners that are close in there, I think, Peters, and if, if maybe Leo wants to park cars in their yard.
Absolutely.
They can turn it into a company.
But you didn't do that for this down here. You know what I'm saying? I mean, if you wanted to keep equal, nobody contacted us and said, hey, is it gonna be all right if we have a concert?
We don't do it for Wake Forest either.
Right, so that's what I'm saying.
Well, we have to come downtown.
We wanna deal with.
Yeah.
That's something we might have learned from last time that we wanna do differently last time.
It, it was a lot easier to partial or the, the little thing stuff when I went door to door and left the notes and knocked and tried to talk to people, you know, so they understood.
Well, this, I mean, unfortunately, you know, when you have a concert, I can't, I can't tell you how far it's gonna go, who it's gonna bother, you know? I mean, we can sure talk to people within a block, you know, the people to the west probably won't hear too much, but they'll hear something, it's gonna be probably to the, to the south.
It's just nice to know that somebody took the time to call instead of reading it in the paper or hearsay in the community.
Yep.
I'll tell Lee, he can park cars back there in his backyard that night.
Absolutely. No one back there.
How about tell Mary, not like.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, when do you need to know a, a yes or a no?
You know, as soon as possible so that we can start letting the respective people know, like, okay, we can make sure that the stage is gonna fit there. We can get the, if we, you know, porta-pots, we can get those ordered, the S D L, we can get that ordered, fencing, that kind of stuff. Um, so, you know, the, the sooner the better, I know June seems a long ways off, but.
Yeah, but laws can't.
Plan an event, it's.
Play an event, now is when they, all people have to know.
Megan, S D L, sorry for my ignorance.
A special designated liquor license.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So what's your plans if it rains?
If it rains, we'll probably, if this is available, move it down here, um, the stage, he's hoping to have a cover for it. So as long as there's not lightning and we can protect the equipment.
Okay, so that would be, we learned that last time, we could have that in place too, which your, plan is if the one don't work, you know?
Yep.
Cause last time it was chaos.
Well, that was because of the liquor license, uh, because of the language, so.
So that's just what I'm concerned, is make sure that we have a plan that we all know and it's thought out well and it's documented, we're all being.
So do we have to, as a council, besides approving that it happens, do we have to make a special exemption for, for the special event?
We didn't look at that in our meeting tonight, so I'm not sure what restriction there is. You know, it could be just a park or a, or it could be an ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, the sooner we can find that out, like, I mean, because if, if it is gonna be delayed three months, then I may want to find someplace else to do it or cancel the event, so.
I don't think we wanna delay it three months, but I would like to leave it open and discuss it maybe at the retreat and by then we'll have the rules and regulations for the city use of, and what we could pursue or.
Can we take action at the retreat?
Well, if it's a meeting, you can.
Okay.
It's just a retreat, so, but if you call it a special.
But since everybody is there, it's considered a meeting?
Well, that, but, uh, what I'm talking about is you have official agenda.
Rings on the agenda.
We ended the thirty, maybe Scott can join us. You know, the park's got a long history of events at, at the park. Huge religious revivals have been held at Graves Park, there are pictures of people that are there. Uh, horse shows on the baseball field, they've had those. Uh, swim meets at the pool, used to have swim meets, competitive swim meets. Uh, they had donkey softball, they had the seventy-fifth anniversary pageant was held on the baseball field, it was a huge thing. And all kinds of attendance, so I'm not opposed, the only thing that I feel like, you have to really make sure you get, like, you know, get a lot of things organized, you know that after last year and then you gotta make sure we got insurance. And then the biggest thing that I think Lee's gotta find out of, there is indeed a ordinance against alcohol in the park. And when they had that baseball game, they were trying to get around that by having a beer garden type thing that was actually fenced off. But then it got to be pretty controversial, the, and the, it was pretty, pretty big controversy in the community, so they decided just not to have the, the beer and they went in and had the game. But there, I'd like to see it, I would like to listen to it, I think it's a good deal, but I think we have to check a few things out before we can.
Yep.
Make a decision, so thanks, Megan. Oh, I didn't ask Scott again, Scott, anything else? Nope, okay. Nope. Uh, next gen item is approved resolution two, oh, that's not, we've got something else here. Uh, Wakefield Progressive, that's the, I thought there was a, oh, that's, oh, here's the name, okay, I got it. Approved resolution for council president to decide, I thought we did that.
No, you've tabled it last month. Because we didn't have enough time, so you said to do it this month.
Okay. Approve resolution two twenty twenty-two for council president to decide or bank first, I think we discussed it, didn't we? If there's no further discussion, do you, do you have anything to say about this? Okay, we just do the motion to approve. Do I have to introduce, do they introduce us?
Introduce last meeting?
Nope.
A resolution to the mayor and city council authorizes signatories to exercise banking powers on behalf of the city of Wakefield with Bank First. Wakefield, Nebraska had established an effective bank, whereas the city council financial accounts with Bank First Wakefield, we have accounts there as necessary to establish what changes may act on behalf of the city to conduct financial business with Bank First. Now therefore, being hereby resolved by the mayor and council city of Wakefield that with regard to each account listed below, and they have several, but, it's the mayor, the council president and the city clerk. So it's myself, Pam Vanderbee and Valerie Bard on all of those. The care center count is Amanda Fisher, Heather Gonzalez, Craig Goff, Pam Vanderbee, city clerk. And the civic center is the same, the economic development fund is the same, micro loan fund is the same. It's the mayor, the clerk, treasurer and the council president, so that's what we were, are trying to prove. Any discussion? Need a motion, what do we need, a motion to approve?
Introduce and move to an.
Introduce and move to pass ordinance, resolution number two twenty twenty-two.
Some.
Thank, thank you. Val?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And Ross? Sorry, Pam, I thought we already done that.
Nope, that's all right, I'll take it back because you're gonna have to sign it here.
Um. A sales tax grant for improvements for public parking at school athletic stadium.
I'm not sure if you guys need to vote on this or not, but we did put it on the agenda, this is the fifty-five thousand budget time that they had, granted, um, to this stadium project for public parking along Eighth Street.
This is along Eighth Street as part of, it's a diagonal parking?
Yes, Andy got my.
I thought C R A granted him funds for that already.
So Jim, how much have we, we gave, the extension of the utilities, you know, just offhand, how much are we giving to the project? It's like eighty thousand we were talking about one time?
What was your number?
Around eighty thousand to extend the utilities up there?
I know the, the work order for F P P D was forty to forty-five thousand for that, so we've got that plus material, so. You're probably in that.
It's maybe a little less than eighty?
It should be.
I think it was seventy-six, something like that?
Might be.
And then how much is C R A giving them?
Up to a hundred.
How much?
A hundred, up to a hundred, it's gonna come back down, I think a little bit, though.
A hundred thousand, that's for parking also. For parking, but the seventy-six thousand was for extended utilities.
Are you sure that's for parking, C R A or?
That's what I was thinking.
C R A, they had to, had to go to, uh, infrastructure for the community.
So included the street, the sidewalk and.
Uh-huh, right.
You mean they were connected up there.
And then the sales taxes, what did it spend, how much?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five?
And they want that strictly to go to public parking.
Does it have, yeah, I suppose it has to be on the street if it's public parking, I thought they were gonna help with public law.
There it doesn't have, I don't think it has to go to.
Public?
Public infrastructure like C R A, but maybe we're getting mixed up, I don't know. So I know it's fifty-five thousand towards.
Parking. And C R A is towards concrete, like parking sidewalks?
Sideways, probably to turn around.
And the seventy-six thousands were extending utilities. And what's the total cost of the project? If they're, they're just this, I mean, the football field, the track are already there, but just for this stadium, technically, what is the total cost, you know?
Three point eight.
Three point eight million?
Three six three eight.
Okay, so, um, the committees have brought that to our attention, it's about quarter, close to quarter of a million dollars, I don't know what it will end up being, but, um, that project. So this is just approving the fifty-five for the sales tax? Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any discussion?
Do we have an itemized breakdown of what, you know, the parking on that street's going to be, is there gonna be a landscape included or retaining law or anything that's going there?
Containing law, maybe with the C R A.
Containing law, protecting, there's like a turnaround.
You guys say Scott on this one?
Type thing.
No, I don't think so. Okay, thanks, I keep forgetting you're back there.
They also.
That's all right.
Other sidewalk, I think it did a request to, to make sure that it was wide enough to accommodate people chairs and that sort of thing.
Jim, is this, this was budgeted by the sales tax committee in their budget?
Yes.
And then we have to approve it, so it is something that we have control over.
Sales tax, has approved, yeah, yes.
And they had meeting just last, yes, it was a couple days ago and C R A has approved this amount.
C R A has already given the money, right?
Okay.
Was it on last year's budget? I think so, it's, it's been handed.
Say, there's nothing on my budget for this year from C R A.
So this is last year's amount that was budgeted, so.
Yes, yes.
But I think that's about the amount that the city has given for the stadium project and when we had a retreat a couple of years ago, this was one of the things that, I think it was the same group of council people that, one of the things we wanted to get done was to finish, and have a, finish the stadium project and we didn't know it was gonna be this large of a project, but, and one of the things we said we would do at that time was to try to help extend the utilities, is that right, Jim?
Yes.
So everything here has been discussed, um, it's just going to approve it. The one thing I would say is, you know, I think the school board is, is working well with the city, but, when they thought the football field was not good enough and they played their games out of town for a year and that came from the coaches thinking, we need an upgrade, Jim Clark and I went to the school board with a pretty good plan and a pretty cheap plan and the answer we got from the school board, but Jim Clark asked the question, he explained it was what the costs were gonna be and it wasn't very expensive, it was a good deal and their response, I'll never forgive, when we were expecting that they would say we'll pay half of it, the response that they said, when Jim asked how much they were willing to put forth, it was not a nickel. So, and I just, I think that was mistaken, they said that, but it kinda rankled to me that with the old football field that was being repaired by the city, the answer was not a nickel and they said, well, that happened a long time ago, it's been a number of years ago. But I hope that their response, the next time we have a city project that they can be a part of would be, that yeah, we feel like we use it, we'll help support it or, it's a good thing that the community will help support it. But I, I'll never forget the comment of not a nickel because that totally caught me off guard. Um, so anyway, we need to vote on this, Larry?
We gotta have a motion.
Oh, we haven't had a motion?
Yeah, I heard the sales tax grant for Incubus for public parking at school athletic stadium for fifty-five thousand.
Ross?
Aye.
Bob? Larry?
Aye.
And Scott would be an aye as well. I do know that more recently on the light project, we were probably, they were gonna pay for their share of the lights and that fell through as well, so. Hopefully we've got, we'll have more reciprocation between the boards because their tax district is much larger than ours. Next thing is the city administration report, we've got three people that give reports. So whoever, whoever wants to give a report can give a report. Nikki, you're.
Well, mine is pretty much for all stuff and we already answered those questions, otherwise Chad's list is way longer than mine, so I told him he can certainly talk to the council.
You only can last, Jim, do you have any to report?
I, I did hand out for you guys the, uh, the minutes from the meeting that we had this morning, Val and I, um, Olson's on the street project, so that's the time you, you, you review and again, and most of that is, uh, we were looking, they were looking for direction from us on, you know, what the expectations were for the while that you were, um, creating and, uh, get some of that stuff established so they can get a, an estimate to us here in a few weeks.
All right, good, Chad?
Um, do we need, do you want me to go through, um, the, all these one, kind of by line items, is that what we wanna do?
Are, are things to talk about?
Yeah, okay, so the majority haven't been talked about, and some of these are just, uh, to get this in front of the council and the mayor, um, for conversation, but in the end will require a motion or a approval. Um, that might result in next fiscal year or potentially this year if we, if we have the funds. But the first one would be the Sixth and Main storm pipe repair and this is, this was brought to my attention by actually John Pretzer. Um, we have a rusted storm pipe, uh, on the intersection of Sixth and Main. Um, the temporary fix is going to be to pull up the brick, um, repair the top half or the top third of the pipe and install concrete on top, um, saving the brick and moving forward. We can self-perform this job, um, the ultimate move here would be to, uh, have a complete renovation of that intersection as we have multiple spots that are failing, uh, in the storm. The storm is installed, uh, no greater than six inches below the, you know, the, the paving that's there now, which is the brick. So obviously we run into moisture issues and things like that that are taking this steel pipe into disarray, so we will have to make a plan for that in the future. But the immediate repair, um, would be that we can self-perform it and do this repair as it's been done prior, uh, with either cold patch or concrete, so. Um, I don't know if we need to seek approval for that, but that's, that's item number one.
Are you taking up the paving brick?
Yes.
And you'll put the paving brick back on?
We will, essentially, the long-term goal with that would be is for each, uh, intersecting approach to be concreted like many others are in the community. And we would leave the center square all brick and you would have ten to fifteen foot of paving to cover over the storm that is currently there or that would be replaced in the future. Um, otherwise it'll be a continuous, um, patch and replace type situation.
Yes, that's right.
But right now we currently have a football-sized hole in the street, we currently have that right now. Uh, it's been located, we've looked at it, um, the new container that we can do in house will, could suffice for years to come. It, it, it'll definitely not take us in the opposite direction, that's for sure.
But you'll put, you'll put cold patch on it after you.
We didn't wanted to go with concrete, uh, and we wanted to do that, you know, on a day that, you know, concrete's available and it's, uh, allowable conditions, uh, for that to be set up and to move forward with, so.
And the paving brick, you'll store those?
Yes, we'll palletize those and store those for other reasons, or just down the road.
Okay, that sounds reasonable, but it sounded, what do you guys think? Me?
The question I have is, you have in there any rented equipment, what are you talking about?
So as of right now, we feel that we depend, potentially need. So, as of right now, we feel that we depend, potentially need a small excavator to dig down alongside the existing storm to get down to where we can make a patch on top of the current pipe and to dig that up, uh, rather than by hand or shovel, given what conditions, we don't, are unknown, you know, what the, whether it's compacted soil or aggregates or whatever, um, we just, I put that in there because that's worst-case scenario, and I wanted that to be known, that potential rental of equipment would be needed.
Absolutely, you might need council Yeah. approval for that on that aspect.
Yeah.
How did that come out? When you rented the equipment and hit the fill, and you took the, filled in the basement of the house?
Um, that's number two on the line item, but, um, we can, if you want, I mean, we had a project cost on that. It's, it's misquoted here. The quote showed eighty-one hundred dol, or eighty-nine hundred dollars for that, uh, basement, did, uh, tree removal and, uh,
Sidewalk removal?
Sidewalk removal along with the fill. Um, the fill soil, obviously, we had on hand in our own stockpile at the city. Uh, we were, I also contacted Meyer about this project, uh, asked when he could get to it, and he didn't have a definite response, um, for any time in the near future. I moved to pro, you know, proceed with this, uh, with the fact that, at eighty-nine hundred dollar estimate, um, we spent roughly just under four thousand dollars to complete that task, that, and this is where the invoicing would come in, because the city could invoice back towards that entity.
Could go back to the public works?
Yes, and we had, that was, we were running four thousand dollars with labor, fuel. I even put a number in there for use of our equipment with wear and tear as a percentage, uh, as well as what we paid for rental and delivery of those set equipment, so.
So you saved four to five thousand dollars?
Huh?
You saved four to five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
And you'd like to get more of that house?
Yeah, and that was reviewed with the s, the current staff. Um, they feel like any of that stuff, they're comfortable with, um, as long as the council and other appropriate entities are, you know, okay with it as well.
I'm okay with saving four thousand dollars.
Yeah. I don't, go ahead, no, you're fine.
The question was just, uh, that came to my mind, was I, I didn't know, I heard something about Myers, were there bids for this?
Yes.
Yeah, there's two, and who approved the bid?
Well, they got one bid that was for removal of the trees and the sidewalk, as I understand it, from talking to them, with the CRA. Another bid?
Wait, wait, this project is not CRA, it's a sales tax project.
Well, this wasn't the basement filling?
This is the basement.
But that was sales tax.
Well, that was a sales tax, okay.
That was the sales tax project.
But this is two oh three mentioner, right?
Right.
That's across from Gerald Schrader.
Right.
Yes.
It's not.
So who got the bids? It wasn't the CRA that got the bids?
No.
Who got the bids?
Jim.
Jim?
It was sales tax.
Sales tax got theirs.
It was a sales tax project, but gee, Jim got the bids.
We, we got two bids, from Kay and from Myers, and Myers was the one.
So I don't have any problems with what was done, except I'm, I'm not sure how the, how it happened. I mean, if, if Meyer was informed that his bid was accepted.
Well, I called Meyer. I made the appropriate call to him to ask him, because he was, he was the approved bidder, and I asked him if he had the time to perform this work. Uh, at that point in time, we didn't have a snow fence up, uh, and we had an open basement for liability issues, so.
And a chimney stand?
Yeah, and then the city staff then, after I made that call, put a fence up around the basement to secure that from fall or any other entity, but, uh, I called Meyer, uh, I had the conversation with him, which was he is, he could not give me a timeframe in which he would be back to Wakefield to perform that, along with the house demo. And I asked him at that point in time if he was okay with the city entity moving forward with getting it filled, as it was an, uh, an insurance risk or, you know, uh, to that, he said absolutely, you know, have at it, and more welcome to the dirt that's up on top of the hill. Um, you know, and he actually apologized up and down the fence about not being able to get that job done in a timely manner.
Okay. Mike, I don't have any problem with that, just a question is, did was the city, like the mayor or someone notified that you were gonna do this?
I knew, I knew that he was doing it, yeah, he told him all, the whole thing, and I said, if you can utilize our staff and some of our equipment, and he, he itemized the cost of the labor, I thought it was a good idea. And I had a complaint from Mike Work, who had said that the two things were bid differently, and the one didn't include the trees and the sidewalk removal. And I know when I just stopped by when, after it was done, I completely got it done, and there was, the sidewalk was gone, the trees didn't get removed, so it was more than what the low bid was gonna do, they weren't gonna remove the sidewalk, as I understand it, according to what Mike had told me.
Well, what Mike was talking about was the sit, not, was, was the change property.
Who was talking about?
So who did that with?
It hasn't been done yet.
It's not been done.
Myers had planned.
They're, yeah, they're still contracted, that's a, that's a house tear down, that's something that, uh, myself.
I'm talking about the one across from Gerald Schrader, you're talking about the one by the stand, by the.
Right, Mike was talking about.
Talking about, the one over by Rick Hammer. What I'm, I think what I'm coming to conclusion with Leland is, is that we need to, if there's a different avenue that I need to take as acting administrator to have this solidified and/or approved, whether it's going to the sales tax committee, or do we put, does it need to be put out for motion? Does it need, do we need to have a prior approval for the city to perform something that was prior bid and approved to a contract?
Yeah, I, I mean, I wasn't, I, real knowledgeable about how the bid was awarded in the first place. I mean, if somebody, if you say that we've accepted your bid, technically, they could come back, you know, I didn't know, you talked with them, you said, go ahead.
Yeah.
But technically, you know, again, I could say, I had, I had a bid that was happening on that. You know, we'd have some liability.
Well, Chad told me what was happening, and I, that's the, I know the one down there is the one I was talking about, the one that was across the street to the east of Gerald Schrader's.
Yes, and that's what, that's what we did.
That's what you did.
So I, yeah. You're reading me, right?
Yeah, I, I, I think I made the corrective, you know, the right avenue to go with that, um, but if, if what you're saying, maybe the next step would be if we have to, and, and if this is what the council and the mayor would want and/or legally obligated to do, which would be for Meyer to have an email sent to retract his
That's what I'm just saying.
bid, uh, for, you know, jobs performed that cannot be done within a sufficient amount of time. And that's my concern as administrator, is that if we award a bid, then we, again, on, on multiple other projects that we have a timeframe, whether it's a construction bill or whatever, to allot for this work to be done, none of that is spelled out in their contracts or in their estimates.
And probably wasn't in our bid proposal, we.
No, exactly, so those are the types of things that we, we need to look at in the future for this immediate one. Um, it, I, I move forward with it out of our insurance and our liability aspect of it, and on top of that, knowing that he could not get to it for an unforeseen amount of time.
They had been sitting there open for
Sure.
Months.
It needed to be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's another avenue, is that we need to, we need to have a guideline and process of which, if we are to award somebody something and they can't get to it, and we could self-perform it, and there is a, then we either need to create, and I can write something up for that, or we need to spell out essentially in our bid request that if, if, if the work cannot be performed in this amount of time, then.
It's kind of a chain, a chain of command.
Yeah.
It's, you know, where, you know, who do you get?
Well, it is a chain of command.
So do we need something in writing, though, like Chad said, that, because, yes, it was just word of mouth that he and Meyer Construction talked to one another? Do we need something in writing that they're okay with, like he said, retracting their bid, that he's gonna do it instead?
I mean, you put yourself in the sales tax, I mean, if they're the ones that approved the bid.
Well, I would think, I just think the elected officials have sometimes been told, I have no idea what's going on with the house down there, I probably could begin to find out, I get reports from different people, but nobody else is gonna talk to me. Chad did come and talk to me about what he would like to do, and I said that, as far as I was concerned, that's kind of why, you know, we, we thought that, I think the council's on the same page, that whatever we can do ourselves, we'd like to do it. So to me, it was a good first, uh, experiment, and I'm not gonna I mean, I, I think we can get bought down in who knows what, because, but I'll guarantee you, you know, I would like to get a phone call today, I've got a cell phone member, I talk to the city office quite often, and I didn't know, I mean.
Well, in this, in this instance, if it's, if it's something that is going to cause legal conflict then maybe Leland and myself and whoever else needs to be involved in that, if there's a chain of operation there, then we need to establish that.
The chain of operation is built out. Basically, the mayor is supposed to visit weekly with, like, I should be talking to Nikki once a week, Monday morning preferably, find out what's going on that week with them, what's going on in the future, and at that time, I would know, and I can contact the council. If I don't know what's going on, it's pretty hard to contact the council. And that's the, the issue with, uh, not an issue, but it's something that I think is, a lot of times, we don't know for sure what's going on with CRA, we get the minutes, but sometimes there's stuff going on before you get the minutes. I don't know whether, I mean, that's a good number, that house, are they gonna tear the house down, or just smash it in? I don't know, I'm the mayor, I don't know any of that, so.
That's what I'm just saying, you just need to follow, go through the proper chain.
Okay, but that still doesn't answer the question.
Maybe it was, I don't know.
Okay, this is the, this will answer the question. First of all, I think you were, you were right, because you came to me, and you explained the whole thing to me, and I thought, well, jeez, good luck with that. And I thought this is gonna be, it might be a disaster, you know, because sometimes things don't go right. And I was in a muddle on that day, and I came back, drove by the property, it's all filled in perfectly, and the sidewalk is gone, I thought, good, chopped up. He went through the right channels at that time, but if he would have a bid where Meyer would contest it, then you would have had to have gone and gotten, uh, legal document, but you're right, you should probably be in the bid originally as to when that has to be done. Because the board, the night of Board House across from Mike Benson, it took forever to get that thing removed. You had a guy hired, but he came whenever it was, he must have had a dream, and that was the day it was gonna come, because he didn't come on, like, immediately, I know that.
That way he told us.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate the city guys doing that, and I haven't talked to the city guys, but Chad, you said they were, you know, pretty thought that, that his job well done, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, they handled it with no issues, uh, everybody played their part. Uh, Bogus was out sick that day, and, uh, we handled it, uh, without an issue, um, so, going back to what needs to be answered is that when we have a bid awarded, I feel that the proper thing to have done is that, at minimum, we have an email stated from the person that was awarded, from whatever division that is awarding it, to consent that that is approved for them to not perform that work moving forward.
But also on the bid, have a date when it has to be done.
Yeah, you mean, part of the bid specs or whatever
Yes.
would have a completion date or a timeframe. So I mean, I would imagine those are the projects we can perform ourselves, we're not gonna bid anything, right?
Yeah, and tho, and those will come up, like, in our, in our monthlies, in our, uh, specialty meetings, whether it's CRA or sales tax, for them to approve, given what I have estimated it out to cost towards that entity. And then the city would essentially, if it's not, you know, a general fund or whatever, they would bill that entity for that amount, which is just moving funds back and forth, but still, they would get an idea of what that cost is going to come to.
I'm just saying, this is probably pretty isolated incident, we get a bid from somebody, accept a bid, and come back into it ourselves.
Yeah.
So we consider this one done?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
So, the third is the gifting or the acquisition of the Logan Valley Golf Course. Um, acquisition would be a bad terminology, but in the past month and a half, um, I have learned that there's been little or no movement on whether the golf course is going to be open, whether it's going to be actively uh, available to our residents to use, um, because of the people that were involved previously have not, uh, re-upped their lease, and they have not made any efforts to do so, and as of last week, they actually, uh, pulled out completely from it and have gone that direction. So, in lieu of that, I have spoken with the property owner, which is Lauren Baker. I have asked, um, our mayor, I have talked with Ross Hanson about the gifting of Logan Valley Golf Course to be managed by a nonprofit entity within the, uh, city administration to form a committee. And the next step in this is really the last step for myself to even be remotely involved with it, is to get a blessing from our council and mayor to approach the property owner in the effect that he would gift the course and we would manage it as a nonprofit entity, as does Pender, um, to be able to have a long-term vision and goal for the golf course, uh, for the future of the residents in Wakefield. So, that's where it sits right now. I will not, uh, send any such letter to Lauren unless I would have a complete uh, unanimous decision and support by the council, uh, to do so, and that's where it sits right now.
Would Laurel and Dagnos and Wayne operate?
Same, same entity, yep, yeah.
But.
Right now, as it stands, uh, with the conversation that was had, uh, on Tuesday, uh, or I'm sorry, Monday of this week with a previous, um, renter or lessee, is that Lauren is at the stage right now to where he will close the course this year, or he will attempt to facilitate it himself, or if he hears from myself as representative of the city to proceed in a manner, um, you know, of taking it on. So, that could be denied ultimately, but this is where it sits as of right now, just so everybody knows.
That might be something we can discuss at a retreat, possibly?
Yeah. Uh, I, uh, so back to that is, um, I feel as an employee of the city of Wakefield, uh, my time is going to be spent better on other things, um, so I only want to allo, you know, allocate so much time to this. I, I've done a lot of off-the-clock work with this, uh, continuously, I've written him letters and have met him out on the site over my lunch break multiple times. Um, and so, I don't want to designate any more time, so if anybody else wants to pursue this, uh, they're more happy. I know that he respects, uh, certain people in the community. Uh, he feels that the city, uh, is probably the best for the management side of things and moving the course forward in a, you know, in a positive manner. I know that the course makes money. Uh, I know that the people that managed the course last year, or leased it last year, made money on the course, which is good to hear. Um, but I, I feel that Lauren would need, from what he's told me, he would need, um, the support of the council and the mayor to make a decision, one way or the other, on this, on this project, so.
And would you say, uh, I, I think one time you mentioned maybe a thirty-year lease?
That's what I would go for, is a thirty-year lease so that any monies or any inputs to the course are, um, you know, able to be used by our community for a long term. A, a five-year or a ten-year doesn't suffice that, because the course needs that amount of work, and we have budgetary things to stand by. But, uh, that's kind of where I told him that we wanted to be. He would still own the land. He would still gain the tax benefit from having that land. Uh, we would have our own insurance policy, he would no longer pay the, uh, insurance policy, and we would pay, um, the property tax through the dues, uh, that the golf course produces. Is how it currently is set up with, when he leased it. That's what he did with the lease money, was to cover his taxes and insurance. So, moving forward, if we, you know, if we created a committee, that committee would then act as, you know, basically, an accounting firm for the, just like any of our other committees. It would, it would operate on the same.
So he's not gifting the land? We're basically coming to leasing then?
Yes, so the, the land is not turned over, um, to the city.
And he won't have to then worry about finding somebody to run it every year?
And the financial portion of it is kind of what I've brought to him and what he's retracted back to me on how it would, the only way that it'd work for him, so to speak.
So what's the co, cost with the, I guess we can discuss it later, but
Yeah, I mean.
The cost of the, if you put the, the, uh, cost of the taxes along with the cost of the insurance, how much is that?
Uh, you're just sitting under nineteen thousand a year.
And then we would have to have the manpower to take care of it and to run the business?
Yeah, at that point in time, you have to look at hiring a, you know, a, a manager or a course manager for the facility, um, which, you know, they, they got last year on staff and on, you know, an hourly rate, uh. So, yeah, there would be inputs into that, that the city would have to look at, um, but there's also the other avenue of that, which is you're having donations come in for such entities, you know, as far as that goes, so. But there's also the other avenue of that, which is you're having donations come in for such entities, you know, as far as that goes, so.
What's the benefit to the city?
Uh, simply, I would say that you don't lose the course.
Stability.
Stability. You, I mean, the course does produce positive numbers and that's, that's a huge bonus. But in, in s- in all seriousness, you, you don't know what you have until you've lost it type situation. And, um, I can be, I'm pro golf, so I have, I'm kind of shaded to one, one side. I just don't wanna see what we have available to us go away. And it seems like it's been kind of going that way for the last five to ten years in, in a sense, so. It was just an outside interest for me, but if the city was to be, to be brought into it, I would have to make that, you know, knowledgeable.
And it was a golf course and then it went to a farm around, some tree areas. We used to camp out there. We walked through the corner and then the Boy Scouts would camp and I was like on the third hole there. And then when they came back and Walter Petersen, I think was the one that made it back into the golf course.
Yeah.
In the nineteen sixties.
Yeah, he's in no way interested in selling. Uh, he's already been approached with fairly aggressive numbers. So, it, it literally becomes another entity or committee of the, of the city to, to handle. So, that, that is to me, a little bit of a downside, I guess, so to speak.
Well, it's good that Lauren is willing to work with us and have a conversation. We probably have to have that conversation on, at the retreat and.
Yeah.
And last year I have something to say. Ross, what do you think?
I'm, I got plenty to say.
At the retreat, okay. Okay. And do you miss that approval of sale of excess city equipment?
Well, he's going down.
I'm going down.
We're going down the agenda. He's got a whole thing that's on his.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, like, we're, that was number three and we're going to number four, which is a seven-seat, uh, seven-street ditch improvement. There's multiple committees on this that have, um, input on this and we have, I have estimated it out for some of the work to be performed in-house by, um, city staff, for a reasonable amount less, but then that leaves us room for, um, corridor improvements as landscaping trees, so on and so forth. So, if you, if you read it there, um, I've talked with Megan and Nikki about this as far as what we're trying to accomplish and what we would potentially put along that, uh, roadway to, you know, control water, control erosion. And my suggestion to that was a sizable riprap, uh, that requires no maintenance outside of spraying and then, um, planting trees and things like that further in on the property. That is, to my knowledge, uh, not owned by, uh, Dollar General, but is a right-of-way. Is that right, Nikki? To say it like that?
Yeah, for Dollar General, yes.
And so, there isn't a lot of budget of fifty thousand in the sales tax dollars. Uh, for what I budgeted for the riprap and the controlling and the regrading and the erosion, uh, would be around twenty-three thousand five hundred. Uh, that would obviously leave us seventeen thousand five hundred, um, in funds to landscape that. Along with that would come the opposite side of the road, if a, uh, parking lot was installed on the civic center to also control water runoff, uh, through the storm pipe through the road and landscape that area as well. There would be sufficient funds there to do both sides of the road in that designated area.
What do you mean by landscaping trees? Like, large, large evergreen?
Yeah, so we're, it would be a mix of evergreens, uh, shrubs and deciduous trees, shade and ornamental, uh, on both sides. This would be, you know, that would be designed out and we would have an actual plan to go off of, uh, for the landscape portion of it. As for the riprap and, uh, regrading and things like that, that's pretty self-explanatory as far as, uh, what, what that would entail. You have current riprap at the outlet of the pipe now, and that would be continuation from that pipe to the storm pipe that runs underneath the access road to Dollar General.
Right. And we've got two tree board members here, Bob's here and Nikki, that, they've got some grants. Their forest service, their evergreen, both have a lot of grants. You have fifty percent match, so you can probably take those funds and double them with the grant, you think, Nikki?
Yeah.
So, that would be, uh, Bob, you agree with that? Thanks.
Um, the next thing, I think, do we need, we're not gonna be voting on that. This is just for, um, I guess.
That's just some of their information that they're working on?
Yeah, that, that, we're trying to move forward with that portion of it. Uh, the next thing would be, uh, parking lot pavement. I sat in on that meeting. Uh, it was at that time I learned that it was requested that some type of estimation be completed for the civic center parking lot. Um, and so I took that and got, uh, multiple bids on both concrete, uh, asphalt as well with concrete curb. Uh, we know that we have a budget of a hundred fifty thousand that's already allocated, to my knowledge, to that, uh, project. Um, and as you can see, you know, concrete is, you know, a forever thing. We know those numbers, asphalt with concrete curb, uh, you'll have some maintenance on the asphalt. Uh, but those numbers, uh, are pretty aggressive and pretty relative to what the initial budget is. At this point in time, I have contacted an engineer, but both entities that have given me, uh, bids feel that the watershed is something that does not need to be engineered, that it can all flow, um, in the proper chain of command, I guess, so to speak, so. But if the city and the council and the mayor, uh, and even the civic center board would, uh, require a engineer-stamped approval plan, then that would be somewhere in the turnover of five thousand dollars.
So, how much is the bid for asphalt, how many do you have to, that they?
Yeah, so the asphalt and concrete curb from Knife River is a hundred and seventy-two thousand and Barclays, um, is no concrete curb, just laying asphalt down, letting it runoff, um, is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So, um, Knife River does both concrete and asphalt, um, so Barclays does not do the concrete curb. They'd have to subcontract that out, uh, and that amount wasn't listed because I don't feel like that was a necessary avenue to go if they don't provide that service for that install, so.
Was there a concrete bid also?
Yes, that's above it. And the concrete bid from Knife River is two fifty-five, two hundred fifty-five thousand. And Laser Pro out of Columbus is two hundred fifty-three thousand. And that covers from the building that Ross is in, all the way to our existing lot line and around the back for the deliveries and things like that. That also includes, uh, restriping of the entire parking lot with both asphalt and the concrete number. Cause they have the, I mean, right now it needs restriped and so I just have a bid of the entire thing to be restriped.
And Jim, we have a deal with Lawrence and Concrete that they sell at the city concrete at discounted price, right?
Right.
And how much does that save?
That is not figured. It, these are, is, as if they were buying the concrete, so obviously as a city entity, um, I would explain that to any contractor that would be hired, that we would be paying for the concrete, which would come off of the total price.
And how much is it, Jim? How much cheaper is it?
I think he discounts us around five dollar a yard.
I don't know if Lawrence can handle, if it goes all concrete, just saying. They could handle if it went curb, but I don't think Lawrence could handle it, with his operation that he has to facilitate, cause they would bring in a laser screed into the project and you have to feed that with two or three trucks at a time.
He, he can do that. He just brings trucks from Pender.
Oh, okay.
He's done big projects like that.
Okay.
A lot of big projects.
Yeah, and I would, we would gladly keep that if that's true, but that's for.
Yeah, he, he's got, he'll, he would facilitate that, don't you think, Jim?
Yes, sir.
So, there's.
Can I give you a little bit of?
Yeah, no, that's good. Uh, so number five is, or number six is the nuisance issue, dilapidated buildings, et cetera. I did a full-scale, I guess, nuisance and dilapidated properties assessment. Quick pictures, Nikki and I worked on that to come up with a plan, uh, to proceed with that. There's gonna be some legal questions with this that I think we're gonna need answered by the miners on what is possible, but that was also gonna come up in that, uh, meeting with the law enforcement as well. So, that was, that's, that's that line item. Um, and I, I kinda wanted to get the council's feel as far as where we have been on past, um, issues like this. We have a, we have a vast majority of houses that have some safety issues as well as, uh, onsite or in-yard parking. And I don't know if we're, I, I wanna know from your guys' standpoint and a legal standpoint of what the proper actions or the avenues are for this.
I, I might be speaking on terms, but I think Jim and Nikki and Val and Lee and myself and Larry and Ross would all say it's, in a word, probably frustrated by the fact that those properties have been nuisances and it's the same ones for years and years and years, so. Is that a good word?
Yeah, it seems like, you know, you've been one step forward, one step back with people.
Yeah.
Maybe try to work with them and make steps up.
Yeah.
I, I think we have the format in place and the ordinance is about to address this issue. Uh, but we've kind of been working on a complaint system. You know, we don't do anything until we get a complaint to a specific place and then we.
But I think, yeah, we bad complaints on almost all of them, haven't we?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's gonna do any good, but my first.
But it's, yeah, then we will kind of back off until the next complaint, I guess, so.
My first avenue of interest here was to talk with the homeowners one-on-one and to gauge their, you know, their outlook or their intake of what the property, you know, could or should look like. And if they have any, you know, plausible reason to keep some of this stuff on their property or if we have ordinance, you know, I know Nikki has explained to me that we have, you know, uh, license issues and we have, whether the, whether the vehicle or trailer moves or operates, and so those are all avenues that we have to look at. But, um, that's, that's on my to-do list as a, as a daily.
Well, the health board, Jim's also used the health board as a group that can look at yards and see that there's a, something that's like a place where mosquitoes are gonna breed, that could be a health issue. I mean, we've gone with that avenue as well, so. You've got your health board and Jim has been our housing inspector, uh, to inspect the houses and stuff. And I don't know how many you've gotten done, Jim. You've got a lot of them done. And you and Nick, you've gone to how many? A third of them? Fourth of them?
Third.
Yep.
About a third? And all the houses are supposed to get, actually, aren't they? The, the apartment?
All the rental.
The rental apartments are all supposed to get, Jim?
We've been working on it.
That's been part of your duties as a city administrator, Jim, right? So, it might fall on you, Chad. I don't know what kind of, uh, training or Jim's had to have to be a building inspector, but, um, anyway, that's.
With the bill, wherever he finds something that needs to be fixed, it's usually that they don't think he's got any training, but he does. And he's got the position, so.
Okay.
But we also have an issue that I'd like to just mention is, at Pender, there's a, there's two homes and then between the two homes, they poured concrete and put two big containers on there. So, you've got a house, you've got concrete with two containers and you've got a house. And there, evidently there's zoning. Doesn't say they can't do that.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely some zoning things.
So, I think we did, we need to make sure we have some zoning that says, that's not, you can't do that.
Pop-up, another deal to that would be like a pop-up storage facility, whether it's a, uh, carport or a, you know, a flexible carport that's not, uh, stationary. It, it creates liabilities and things like that. We have to look at that stuff and, and get some guidelines there. And I know there's already a lot of guidelines in place. It's just how we can enforce them. And so, those are the things that I'm trying to nail down here, um, go from there.
The other thing we were gonna try and tag it was with ready-to-serv notice. And Tracy, you've investigated that, right? Where they, they told us at the mayor's meeting that there is a ready-to-serv new, uh, law that if we are ready to serve a house and they're not using water or electric, we can start built, we can tell them that we are ready to provide those and that then they have a monthly, the minimum monthly charge for both. But you've tried to research that, haven't you?
I, I, I can't, I can't even find it in Nebraska statutes, honestly. So, I have seen that it is, uh, in other places. So, I'll, I'll come next month if you want with, uh, with the information about how we're gonna.
So, those mayors and their councils have actually put the ready-to-serv in their local.
So, I'll, I'll look for.
Is what you're thinking?
I've seen it for other states. I just haven't found it for Nebraska, but I'll.
Well, maybe those mayors we're talking about, they have a local ordinance possibly that was ready to serve. Okay, thank you.
So, the next thing is, uh, we have to get it out for discussion is, uh, the possible conflict of interests for myself, uh, for manning equipment and future projects. So, um, we've talked about, you know, my background in landscaping and there's a lot of communication, um, projects that are going on. And I obviously can bid a lot of that stuff in-house, but we also need to secure bids. So, Nikki and I were talking about that on that end, that we need to get it into secure bid format, you know, to where the bids come in, they're, they're gathered and whether it's a CRA, sales tax, whatever, they look at those bids and award those bids, per their, you know, approval. And I need to know if, we need to take my prior company out of the bid, um, contest um, so that I can focus on the current bids that are coming in or if it's not a conflict of interest that is spoken about in front of the council and, you know, in a, in a meeting. So, that's, I wanted some clarity on that as well as equipment needs that the city staff or the city currently doesn't have. But I can supply that equipment through my previous entity underneath of a rental agreement that suffices what other rental places are charging or whatever. And if that's not the case, then I wanna just move completely away from it and have a clear, a clear understanding that that's the way, uh, the city and the council and the mayor would wanna proceed.
Do you have any?
There's some clear conflict of interest issues. Uh, we just have to, you have to see what you're talking about. I mean, a lot of statutes on, a lot of statutes on conflict of interest in public employees.
Could you research that? It's, uh, it's far less, it would be the company that he has ownership in, but he wouldn't be the one probably making the.
I wouldn't be the one performing the work.
Or making the bid.
Or making the bid, yes. It goes to our estimating department, just like it would go to Wayne Country Nursery or Kyro. That's, those are to be what I mentioned on the bid, so, um, a closed bid form is, is the best way. But if it's, in the end, if we were awarded it, I don't want there to be a conflict of interest because of my position with the city. So, uh, we need to research that more and get to a final agreement on that, I think.
Chad, are you gonna still continue to own the property? I know you've talked about your brother was kinda taken over.
Uh, they are currently running my prior company, my, my two brothers and my sister.
But you still have ownership. That's partial or?
Yeah, no, partial.
Partial, so.
Yeah.
We started researching conflict stuff, so.
Okay, good. Um, so moving on from that, uh, these are just items, uh, up for the council that I feel that are needed. We have a shop and a building improvement, um, that hasn't been, had anything done to it outside of needed repairs for as long as I can remember, uh, being an employee at the city of Wakefield. I've thrown some numbers together on this, um, that I've gotten estimates from our current vendors that we use, uh, for such things. But to, to an extent, like outside to be repainted, a city staff can perform that. Got the estimation on the, the hours and the, and the, and the materials that it takes for that. Garage door to be installed to, you know, allow better flow in and out of the shop, so that's safer. Right now, we're jockeying around, uh, equipment and vehicles and it's just not a, a very good situation there, but, um. And then, you know, some of the other things on nine are the same thing where, um, tree section reached out to me about the, uh, selling and/or potential selling of equipment. And there's avenues that we need to follow on that as well. And so, for tonight, it's a discussion of, these are pieces of equipment that we currently are not using or that the city staff feels that can be sold and/or traded for needed equipment.
You still need two, two trucks?
The two that we currently have, which is a brand-new one, or the three, and then, uh, it was a feeling through the staff that the red truck was to be kept and the white one was to be sold, cause that, the, the new truck that was purchased, uh, currently basically takes the place of that one.
You're talking about the old white dump truck?
Yeah.
Okay. Was the deal with that, I think we were gonna sell it, but they felt it didn't really have much value?
Yeah, in my opinion, it's the complete opposite of where I know the market is for such materials. If you, I know there's not a lot of people here that are on Big Iron or, you know, Iron Planet, but even the snow mower, stuff like that is premium, premium dollars. We have the possibility too to trade if we're gonna be trading on implement attachments, um, and, and stuff like that, so. I just wanted to know the avenue of what we needed to take to put that out in proper form.
It's so valuable to try to get another piece of equipment that you.
Yeah, and that's what the top. Yeah, and that's what the top three bullet points are kind of there is, you know, Ross and I talked about the skid loader and potentially trading in the current skid loader that we have and the city performing the duties that the care center needs, uh, for that piece of equipment and then we have it to use for all of our future entities, uh, of repairs and things like that. And then, you know, the plow for the payload, the plow for the tractor. What we're doing right now is pretty inefficient as far as time and if we improve in these two areas, snow removal, probably the time that it takes to do this snow removal gets cut in half or better. I can do a cost analysis on that and break down that for future, but these are things that I immediately saw, given what we have currently with the city.
I got a question on that, snow removal, have you reached out to the county, what they could possibly do with it? Do forests with their grader, cause Jim, we'd use them with big snowstorms sometimes that way.
Right.
The county has come in and they can clean our streets with their grader pretty good. I was impressed with their operation, you know, a few years ago when we had big snows.
Yeah, I guess in, in, that's an avenue that we have to look at, but in, in term of what we're talking about here is that by upgrading to these specific attachments, we completely take the necessity out for having to actually use that source, uh, cause we can provide that service in no matter what event we get. Uh, we're currently, we, we're kind of locked with what equipment we have and how efficient it is and what it does. But I'm not opposed to outsourcing, you know, help on the service either, so it's once financially stable, it's best for the community.
Is this the John Deere tractor that we leased from Rosenberg?
Yes.
Is that why we had the big, had to pay off for damage?
Yes.
Do you think about the damage, was that the one that tractor was?
I have no idea.
About three thousand dollars in damage they charged with, with the, when we traded goods, right?
Yeah, we trade every year and then they assess what it looks like at the end of that trade-in value and then we had an extra bill of about thirty-five hundred dollars for damage and when I asked Mogi about it, he said, well, you know, normal wear and tear, when you're cutting down trees and the tree branches are falling on the, the tractor, when you're removing snow and you're buttoning up against curbs and all that, it's gonna do some damage, so.
Do they always charge that, Jim, when they, when you get, they do, that's not uncommon?
No, it's not.
You're gonna get some expense in that, you, you have, it's a wear related.
They use the kind of a fair wear and tear and if there's any additional damage.
So we didn't do any damage to it other than just wear and tear and the paint coming off and?
Oh, it gets, it gets its fair use and, and anytime you go out and pick down trees, there's, there's a good potential of, doing a little bit of, uh, more damage in the day.
Thanks.
I got a question on that payloader, you're looking at putting a plow on the front of that payloader so then you eliminate the bucket on it?
Well, it's a, it's a quick detach actually, so.
Yeah.
In the time that you, so in the time that I've discussed with Mogi on how long it takes to move the snow with just a bucket, if you can imagine a bucket, bucket can only handle so much snow, right? So once it's full of snow, it just pushes snow out to the sides. Where a directional plow can take the direction of the snow in any which way you want, which would be the curves, right? With a straightforward bucket, you're just pushing straight forward. With a directional plow, we can go any way down the street, angle the blade, go around cars, so on and so forth and make the process a lot more streamlined. The buckets come off with a quick detach, which is hydraulic and it also attaches, quick attach to the plow. So that change out, it, it doesn't limit the machine, cause you can immediately just go and change out to bucket to load snow or stop pile of snow. If that makes sense.
Yeah. I remember when we needed to get the snow blower for removal of snow on Main Street, you know? Jim, you probably were around them. I remember saying how good this snow blower's gonna do removing snow on Main Street, cause we're gonna windrow it and it's gonna go right down and we can save time, well, how many years could we do that? Maybe a couple? But then the, the equipment changed out on the tractors, I understand all.
We had a couple of issues, the, when we had the really deep snow, that was when it was valuable, but it was on the back of, it wasn't, where they had to back up or to it, it was on the back of the tractor. And then it also stuck in the, then when it, when they really plastered into the truck, it would stick in the truck cause it came in there with force, I think all those things happened. And we tried to sell it at one time, but we didn't sell it and I was talking to everyone, I think, or I think I talked to Jim and Chad, they both thought we, we needed it, is that right? We still need that snow blower, do you know?
That's a piece of equipment that we have that could be sold.
And that's what you guys think is it could be sold?
Yeah.
And how do you, when you get a really deep snow, then they, you know.
Well, there's, there's a cause of effect too, is that if, the amount of time that it takes to do stormable with the bucket, compared to the amount of time that it takes, so if you take three hours to go to the whole community, in turn, you can do the community three times with less snow with a front end, right? So, that's my expertise on the equipment and the need of that equipment for future deep snows, because you can stay ahead of the snow instead of getting behind it, which then you have to snowblow.
So how much do you think we can get for the stuff that you think we should sell?
Those numbers, uh, well, I won't know those numbers on that, like, I would be, we would trade that snow blower in on, say, a directional plow for the tractor, cause that would come from the same type manufacturer. And so, I don't wanna waste resources if we're thinking that this is something that needs to be discussed, uh, again, further down the line, uh, but there are people that are currently working on those numbers, those trades and things like that and I have not received those back.
So, did you want directions on that, or what, how the council feels about it today?
Yeah.
I guess what I would like to see through is what our county can maybe provide us with services with some of this snow removal, cause I'm looking at some of these dollars for snow removal, we're looking at a hundred eighty-five thousand for the.
Oh, no, that's a, I thought that was updated, it's eighteen thousand five hundred.
Okay.
For the payload plow and it's sixteen thousand five hundred for the tractor plow.
Alright.
Well, when Dennis helps us out, does it, the county, then we pay the county, is that how it works?
No, we've never had to pay them.
He just comes to the county itself to say.
We've used their dump trucks and other banks when we had big snows.
And if you call them, they've always tried for.
I've never had to call and they've always showed up.
Just show up?
Dennis just does it out of being a city employee.
Yeah, Dennis was.
He's the new foreman, shop foreman for the south shop.
Dennis is?
Yesterday, they, they appointed him. And then Terry Nicholson is your, our representative, so those are the two people to talk to about.
And we're paying taxes for this, aren't we?
Well, yes.
Isn't there a township road anomaly?
What?
Isn't there a township?
That one with the.
Yeah, we're paying taxes township.
Yeah, but they're doing it, that's a good deal.
Yeah, so I'm just saying that we need to see if they could possibly help us out with some of this snow removal.
And they're saying that they always do if we have a big snow, just they show up, Dennis and Dennis.
And they don't charge a bunch of look right now for this fiscal year.
No snow today.
It seems like at the end of the budget here, Chad, we usually have some dollars left over, I feel like in the equipment budget, usually. And a lot of times we'll make, you know, a purchase at the end of the year or something like that.
Yeah.
So.
And, and whatever items you propose to sell, we should, we need an estimated, uh.
Okay, and we wanna, we wanna contract that help to give us or just have an estimate given to us by whoever we're working with on?
You just come up with a, it's five thousand dollars is the threshold. If it's worth less than that, it's a different process and if it's worth more, as far as we have to advertise.
Okay, alright.
In the street budget for new equipment purchase, uh, sixty-seven to thirty-seven fifty, that's a very precise number.
That's what's budgeting.
Yeah.
Was that the cost of the chipper that they were gonna get or?
That was a grand, that was denied.
That's a, well, so, what do you think? You wanna give permission to, to advertise those for sale and?
You can just come back at another meeting with the list and then.
Alyssa Williams.
Or at the retreat.
Come to the retreat.
Act on events if you're gonna. How long do you guys wanna meet?
We're gonna listen to the speaking.
An hour.
So, number ten is just, uh, we're working on the highway border, street skate project, uh, state's on there, that's city sales tax and CRA and Michael Foods willing to chip in on that as well. Uh, there's been some input from Wayne Country Nursery, uh, that they've given an estimate, correct Megan, on that? And so, again, here's what we're looking at, you know, potentially if, if we can perform this in-house, how far we can stretch dollars. Uh, the first in main landscaping, uh, CRA and Michael Foods, Michael Foods is willing to have input on that as well. And, uh, you know, with the main street planners we spoke about, if it's okay to pull the planners off, uh, in February, first part of March, and get into the greenhouse to allow Eaton's greenhouse to facilitate the plantings of the pots to be ready for spring, uh, and the city will take pots to greenhouse March one. City will return the pots to the main street, uh, once the growth is established, um, from them and, uh, and then kind of going from there is just the city creating an ordinance surrounding vehicles for home, allotment of trailers, campers, mowers, outdoor parking, discussion of creating a parking area or accessing, uh, for a homeowner to park overflow property. I've, I spoke with Mike a little bit about this, I don't know if the city's up to it, but obviously there's some land that Will Dasha owns, he's, he's potentially thinking about a storage facility, but then we also have property like the, the dump and I don't know if, I need to know if the dump is an available spot for people to have that avail, availability to put stuff that we don't wanna see in the community, um, or if that becomes a liability that we don't wanna take on. Cause these are discussions that I'm gonna have with homeowners here in the near future to discuss kind of our, um, our goals and, and kind of what we wanna see, you know, moving forward.
You're gonna have to start bringing us food, you're gonna talk this one.
That's it, that's the last one.
I see we're doing a lot, thinking about doing some street projects, I think we, Val and I need to visit with you about, you know, some of the existing streets, what we'd like to see down, right Val?
Yeah, today, um, when we were talking with the engineers about Ninth Street, I said if there's a way that we can tie in some other projects as optional, that would be a wise thing to do, intersections, whatever, cause something horrible.
Yeah. So.
Thank you, is that it, Chad?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
It's good, it's really good. So, return tomorrow and stay after it.
You don't, you have class tomorrow too?
Yep.
Then, how about?
It's every month until December, so.
Two days?
It's three days.
So it's thirty also?
Yep, and, uh, the class is actually pretty intense as far as the requirements, uh, the requirements of the class are actually more hours required for this class than you would in a bachelor's degree and they're almost a third more than what a bachelor's degree requires. So a lot of the time you're sort of done here, you're putting in three hundred eighty-seven hours towards the class. So, it's pretty intense, but it's good, there's a lot, there's a lot to be taken from it, yeah.
Good. You wanna send a date for this retreat? The thirtieth? Scott? He says yes. Do you have a schedule of your basketball game or?
I don't, but we come up with it, Scott would probably know better than I do.
If it does.
For what?
You, you don't know what's, the basketball schedule is on the thirtieth?
Let me look.
Could you look?
Give me a second.
And so far I have that you guys wanna talk about the golf course, um.
I, I think it would be nice if we could even visit with Lauren maybe for a little bit. You know, Lauren, he can't be constantly working on the water, but maybe we can extend the water because we have the water issues and, you know. He was gonna come back, but, but we kinda decided we could maybe do something there, I think, Jim, right? We thought that time we could do something with, try to get some water to him.
Right, yeah.
But then Lauren didn't come back, so we haven't visited yet, so.
He didn't wanna cost share of some of that cost with, with the extension of the fire protection up there.
Right.
Okay, um, more board members for our list, um, Chad can gather a list of.
The, the boards, the boards, I'd like to have council input on who we put on each of those, some of those committees. And then we would like to start the process of trying to get like, there are some of those committees that need, the terms need to be more than one year, cause you have, I mean, you just get started, you're off, I mean, you could be off the board and you put time in and you're done. And then the other thing is, I've kinda thought about maybe having an advisory group on some of those committees that is rural. Since we can't have members, we could at least have an advisory group come to the meetings and have some input. Do you think that would be okay?
Yeah, just let, let me know.
It might just want, be one or two committees, but that would open up some spots for people to live out in the country that could be, if they ever wanna get involved, they can get involved. So that's what that would be.
Okay.
Fall of the thirtieth, we plan, uh, twelve fifty, so we can go a lot earlier than seven.
Oh, do you wanna go earlier than guys?
I'd prefer to get it done earlier.
Yeah.
What time do you wanna start the meeting? Or the retreat?
Whatever, maybe go three, three-thirty?
Let's do three-thirty, just to make sure we get home.
Three-thirty?
As we go over time.
Three-thirty.
Where? Here?
You wanna have it?
Council chambers?
You wanna have the council chambers or what is the easiest place to?
Council chambers, we'll work on it that way, we wouldn't have to worry about.
Chad, you probably won't be able to be there.
I'll be.
Thank you, it will work out for you or not?
Yeah.
You know, if something comes up, don't worry about the other guys.
Have it at the council chambers, that way we wouldn't have to worry about this place being booked or anything at work.
Council chambers? That work for you, Jim? If you want, if you wanna be there to input, and what else is on the list?
Uh, was there something that we were gonna talk about with the Wakefield party?
We could discuss that.
I wrote it down, but I can't remember.
Just whether or not we get hosted or not.
Alcohol.
The alcohol is big, Stan.
Okay.
Anything else you wanna talk about?
Well, if there is, we can stop him.
Yeah, let me know.
We're two weeks away.
Yeah.
Three-thirty.
Three-thirty?
Three-thirty. How about a motion to a jury, what do you think?
No!
We gotta pay claims.
Three things on the list.
We don't have time, we're gonna have to pay the law.
Water treatment plant update, you mean? There's a, should be a thing in there.
Okay, direction of redevelopment on, and sale of two, two oh three Main Street three.
That was something that Chad had in his report.
So we don't need to talk about it?
No, we do, it's the property that they filled in, so we need the council's direction on where we're moving on redevelopment or sale of property.
So that's sales tax, right? Who owns it right now, the city?
The city.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we didn't, that'll give us a chance to figure out what we wanna do, everybody, try to get a house there probably, isn't it?
Or how we're gonna go about selling it, if that's what we're doing or just getting help.
Well, we've done a couple of things, we've had, we've had an auction or we, we could list it at a certain price and let everybody have an opportunity to, to, uh, respond or, we could ask for sealed bids, we've done all three of those, I think. I don't know, maybe think about what would be the best way to get it advertised. And then do you have any people like on the property where Joel had is, uh, by the hotel there where Joel just sold that, do we have any people that wanna buy that or?
There's been a little bit of interest, hasn't been made, but nobody's, you know, keeps proposals on.
We thought that'd make a perfect place for Michael's Foods to put offices and have a little retail store, is it all Nebraska store or something like that, then have it in a place where they can have a video of the plant in operation with all the eggs going and then have some little things to sell from Wakefield, Wakefield, Michael's Foods and, I think it'd be neat. That, they have that, the candy store there in, uh, Greenwood where they have the, the can, where they do make the candies. Yeah, they, they sell things from different Nebraska things, and then they've got their own things that they sell and they've got, uh, video demonstrations as to what's going on in the building. But you know, Michael's Foods is a pretty famous outfit. We gotta twist their arm and try to get them to be interested in that, or even, cause we think, Jim, did you agree that we think if you get that building to the island, Lawrenceons, if we needed to get that building?
He's still even be willing to consider it, so.
That'd be a pretty nice area, I mean, that would be close, could get much closer to Michael's Foods if you wanted to put workers there or put offices there or put market there, I don't know. But anyway, next one is, uh, the timeline for the, uh, engineering of Ninth Street, we got, you started on that at the beginning today, right? With that Ninth Street? And the Tiff people need to know the prices, I think, I, I talked today to Nick and he said he'd talk to you and that you were having meetings, so. You'll keep him informed.
Yeah, I talked to Nick myself and, uh, so those are the concerns of giving good estimates to, uh, to those property owners, areas, you may be.
And then we need to get a, well, once we get into the cost, then we gotta get the paving district for the. And then we need to get a, well, once we get into the cost, then we gotta get the paving district for the form. And that, that needs to be in that. We need to get the engineering cost and the, or their estimate of the cost, right? And then we can do the paving, okay. So are there any other questions on that? And action on site plan, site plan services for city center parking lot? You already discussed that?
Yeah.
So we can skip that?
But, Chad, were you talking about having someone still do a site plan, a layout of parking lot?
I didn't know if that would be required, but does that go back to the council for approval?
I think you, I think it would be good to get council approval. It actually, the, like, for example, when the sales tax puts out in the budget, we just take their budget, put it in our budget. But it still has to be approved by the elected board. And, you know, the boards probably don't have as much information about a lot of those things that, that what we have. For example, I don't think the, the city center board doesn't maybe know that the council has agreed to try to do something about the lack of a restroom that's close to the senior center. I mean, I doubt if they budgeted anything for that, but that's something that we promised that we were gonna try to look into and try to remedy. So, I, I mean, the recommendation is there, if we usually follow it, we oftentimes follow it. But it doesn't mean that we're gonna say that because they budgeted, you know, because John and Janelle and Gary Dodd and, uh, Cheryl and Leslie put fifty thousand dollars in the budget, doesn't mean that we are necessarily gonna spend that amount of money. It kinda depends on what the prices are, what else comes up that kinda impacts the city, so. I think we have to be aware of that as well. So I don't know that we need a site plan, what do you guys?
Site plans are out here?
Yeah.
We probably gotta give you names of where you think you're doing.
I don't, from what my recommendations were from the contractors, that would be a no. It would be whether the city feels like a stamped approved plan is necessary in the council.
Okay, I don't understand if we need it or not, it's just.
Uh, it's more watershed than it, than it is anything. Um, so if there's any question of concern, it would be how much water comes off a newly paved parking lot that the culvert can handle going across the road, not to overwhelm the road, if that makes sense. Otherwise, the parking lot would hold water potentially for a small period of time and then drain out through the culvert as, you know, as necessary.
We're not gonna push any water out on anybody else's property.
No, the only one that goes slightly that way is a portion of this parking lot back here, um, that would shed that direction, but.
It goes north?
Yeah, that percentage of parking lot is minimal.
The parking lot here goes north too, isn't it?
Just about four spots and the rest of it all goes south.
Yeah.
Some of that goes north or the...
Yeah.
Through culvert straight south of the building.
Yeah.
Chip, do you think we need a stamp, an engineer stamp on that project?
I think it'd be, well, this might be a good place for you to talk to another engineering group, talk to Ace who's, and come, come take a look at it and, and give us some recommendations.
Yeah, I just saw.
I'll be giving it her to make sure you're driven just.
You'd, you would, it would be safer maybe to do it that way? I know the city, uh, Norfolk just hired it. They're advertising for an engineer for, it's like up to eighty-seven thousand dollars and basically they needed a stamp at his expertise and, so it's probably not bad. I did have an engineer stamp, but it would give us a chance to work with one of those smaller guys like Jim and Jim. And our, the, the biggest question with that, do you think that that price is high this year or would be lower next year?
It's definitely not gonna go down.
You don't think it'll go down?
There's a minimal, there's a nominal increase every year in aggregates of no less than usually two percent. It's never, never decreased to my knowledge.
I guess our goal is, I think, is to get a design, to get cost estimates and get the product ready if it ever happen and then go off and try to find sources to pay for it. So that's where we're at.
Oh.
Yeah.
We need to either know, do we have, need to have an engineer or not? The sales tax is used for numerous years for estimates and, um...
So we need an estimate and we actually need to show what we're gonna do?
Well, we have the estimates for the product to go down. We don't have an engineer's stamp. So I think in the short term of it is, is that it would be the safest route to get a stamp with a smaller entity to use and then move forward with getting funds allocated for it, if it's approved.
And that's another dugout project. We got a stamp, but it was, you know, a small, a thousand dollars to do the dugout of the building and the backstop. So if we can find somebody that, that would have, would work with us, and Jim maybe knows somebody, I'm not sure. You maybe know somebody?
Yeah, the firm that I reached out to is one that I recommended to Lyle, like, for, for the, Lyle and Nick for the future or the engineering of the fire department, you know? And they're willing to look at that if they're given the blessing and that's where that five thousand dollar number came from.
And we've got John Schwengman, Ace and Wes, we've got a guy sitting in Wes's, over in Wes's building and waiting for JGO, so. Might be a good time to try something like that, just probably getting done pretty reasonably. Is there anything else on that agenda?
Do we need a motion then for that to get a site plan or are we okay?
I think, um, I don't think you need a one.
So you guys, Nikki, you're...
You have sales tax, um, not this meeting, but last meeting, you said they would pay for the engineering fees if that, if that's what the city wanted them to do is.
To move forward.
But they just want a laid out plan, so it's all done and...
Well, I think that's a good idea. You guys agree?
Yeah.
Well, let's do that, then. We'll try to find somebody.
I have one other matter.
Good.
Has to do with the way, the question about alcohol in the park and I, I found the ordinance. It's ten, it's ten dash one oh three. And it says it's unlawful for any person to consume alcoholic liquor within the corporate limits on conflict ways of property, including inside vehicles, blah, blah, unless authorized by the governing body having jurisdiction over such property. And then it talks about civic center as well, so that means if the city council would, would have the jurisdiction over the park or the park board, maybe you need to go through the park board as well. But as long as they authorize it, then you could do it.
So, and we wanna make sure we had it covered by insurance with that, that we're gonna have, right? That's all, that's all I know, is they tried that years ago, but times have changed, so maybe it would. That's good, Lee. Now can we pay the claims?
Wait, 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 wait.
Ross made the motion.
Okay, Val, okay.
Ross, Val?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Motion adjourned?
So, uh...
Got it, everybody agrees and you have. Scott, your battery's running low. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Well, do you wanna come up tomorrow and just sign these?
I have a blue pad, though.
I got black, I guess.
Okay, so this is the signee at the back. So to get Val. Okay. Next one is the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. Adam, do you want that application?
Yes. I think you'd need, you could keep these.
I keep them, okay.
Yep, they can all, you can go onto a file.
Thanks, Adam. That's good for him, new members.
Can I get some numbers from him?
From me?
Yeah. Welcome. Okay, amount on the water plan. I'll put that up for you.
Okay.
Just a second.
Thanks for coming over.
Sure.
Those were good conversations.
Presentation.
Bob, what's going on? Hey, where are you supposed to be doing this?
The only place in the whole country that will hear this.
They, yeah, those chairs go in the other.